The Select Board meeting on Monday, April 10th, 2023, Lakeville Select Board. We have with us Lorraine Carboni, Brian Day, who is our newest Select Board member, myself, Leah Fabian, Ari Sky, our town administrator, Tracy Craig McGee, who is our administrative assistant. Welcome to a new year. So first on the agenda is reorganization of the Select Board. So typically after an election, we, the board is reorganized. So we have some positions that need to be reorganized, including the chair position, vice chair, and then a few others. So I will open it up to nominations for chair.
I'm the new guy on the team, so I'll defer to the two of you if you'd like to have any discussion or nominations first.
Okay.
Out of respect.
Okay. I'm happy to stay on. I've been the vice chair, acting in this capacity. I'm happy to stay on. Brian, you have experience. I wouldn't mind if you were chair either. Lorraine, I know you have a whole bunch of responsibilities right now, including the Fire Station Building Committee. But I don't know.
Responsibilities aside, I'm capable of handling the chairman of the Select Board.
Okay. So someone needs to make a motion. I don't know how we're going to do this, but if I make a motion, then I would step down and nominate Brian Day for chair. No second?
I'll second the discussion.
Okay.
I think it's time to get to work. I watched the last reorganization. I think it's time to move forward. I have all due respect for the two of you, by all means. I think the meetings have been going well the last few months. I think you are absolutely capable, I really do. I think the town has a lot of business ahead of it and challenges it ever right now where unfortunately you have to recuse yourself, which is to know, you know, you did not cause that. That's an unfortunate timing situation and nothing more. And I would be more than happy to rebuild this in six to nine months and see if things have changed and come right back here and do this again.
We're still open for discussion. So yes, I'd like to chime in on that as well. Just for the folks that are here tonight and watching and for anybody that will be watching this recording down the road, just in past practice, the way that the chair will typically rotate through the board. So we have a three-member board at this time, and each member will typically assume the role of chair in their last year of the term that they serve. The person that is in the second year of their term will usually assume the vice chair role. And then, you know, from there on, so everybody does get a chance. So last year, it was my second year on the board, and I was not afforded the role of vice chair. And this year would be my last year on my term, which means that I would be, my position would be nominated as chair. So right now, I do find, I'm a little insulted right now. And I'm just going to leave it there. And we're right, but we, just to go on. Brian did say we do have a lot of business that we have to move through this year. And there's only one situation that I do have to recuse myself, and that has to do with cannabis discussions. And, you know, for the amount of times that we do discuss cannabis, you know, there are two other members that are completely capable of, and I'm, you know, out of respect, think that they can handle the discussion and making very respectful and determined determinations on those matters.
So to answer or to offer some information on what you just said, that has happened in the past where the person who was in their third year was the chair. But that's not always the case. In fact, the board has often reorganized before the election, which completely, you know, blocked any new selectmen from coming in for, from having a vote. But also, next year, when there's a board of five, it's going to be impossible to have the person in their third year because for two years in a row, there's going to be two people that are going to be in their third year. So that's tradition. It's not a rule. And frankly, Lorraine, you haven't been in on some of these executive sessions where we're discussing lawsuits with regard to marijuana. And I personally feel as though we're opening the town up for, it's my job to protect the town. You haven't been in the executive sessions because of your conflict I have, so.
And I think that the two other members on the board are quite capable of handling those discussions without my way in.
But you're pretty much not giving a third opinion. I mean.
Well, there's, I know we're just singling that particular situation out, but there could be other situations that a member would have to recuse themselves as well.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. But also, I, you know, I always try to do what's right for the staff as well. I mean, Ari, Ari and I have been discussing marijuana almost every business day since November. So now we're asking him to have to make two phone calls, one to the chair, one to the vice chair. I know that, you know, everyone says that's what he's paid for, but I just feel like it's just easier to have one person be in charge.
Well, if.
One other point would be that the role of the chair also creates the agenda, which creates an optic where other parties in town may be concerned that things wouldn't get on, not that they wouldn't, but that it could be concerned that things might not get on it because of that position. And I think in favorability of reducing the risk profile to the town, it would be better not to have that concern. And this is not a consideration that there's not the capability to do the position whatsoever.
Right. In setting an agenda, any topics that go on the agenda, whether or not the person has to recuse themselves can be put on the agenda. So I'm not going to say that if I were chair that I would recuse myself from setting the agenda because of a marijuana concern. It would go on the agenda.
So, you know, just going back to the other thing about work, we have to relook at every single selectman's policies this year to get a board ready for five people, which there's a lot of selectmen's policies that have to be looked at. I offered you not to be the Fire Station Building Committee, but you wanted to do that. Now you also want to be chair. I don't know how it's, I know how much work it is. I just.
I appreciate your concern, but I am an adult and I am very good with my time management. And if I didn't think that I was capable or able to execute the duties of the chair of that committee and this committee, I would not have put myself in that position.
Okay. Well, for the current moment, I am the acting chair. So there is a motion and a second. All those in favor of Brian Day being the chair.
Roll call or no roll call?
Roll call. Just make it roll call for Fabian, aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Aye.
Okay.
Moving forward.
So we have a three-way tie. So again.
Wait, wait, wait. No, I said aye.
Oh, you said aye. Okay, I'm sorry. You said aye. So Brian Day would be our new chair. Congratulations.
Well, it's just.
Great to start off on this note, but congratulations, Brian. I think you'll be a great chair. But just because I planned this.
Let me, I just want to add a couple things because this is a long agenda. And we have a couple, I just want to, we have a couple things that maybe we can just go through them as we get there. But in case we have time between, these are the items that I suggest we can jump to.
So it's 6:10. We've got 6:15 with the moderator, 6:30 for liquor license, which is out, 6:45.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You guys didn't finish your role of positions.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Want to go back with that?
Can we go back to them at another time? I think we need to, well, you can do whatever you want. I'm sorry. Mr. Chair?
We have now one, well, one, two, three. I'm looking at the positions that are at least empty. I think that would be at least good to go through and do. So I would like to at least start with the vice chair and see if, you know, Lorraine, would you at least be interested in that?
As long as there's a nomination on the floor, I make a motion that Lorraine be vice chair.
I second that motion. So we've got a motion and a second. We roll call vote to have Lorraine Carboni be vice chairman.
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We also have empty position of the FY '24 budget since it designated 20 people. Is there anybody that has interest in continuing that for the next month or so?
I don't know if that's necessary.
Yeah, it's, there's only a month left and it's mostly wrapped up. Would you, do you require any assistance from us at this point? So leave it, leave it empty for now. We'll go back in FY '25. Union negotiations. I believe we still have one that's outstanding.
Correct.
So is there anybody that has interest in seeing that through to completion?
I can do that if you want.
Are you not interested?
No.
Okay. I'd turn in a motion to have Leah Fabian continue our union negotiations the rest of the year.
Spoke.
Second. Okay. Roll call vote. Fabian?
Fabian, aye.
Carboni?
Aye.
Day, aye. I believe that is the last that they emptied, but I will look Tracy's way to see if we have anything else.
Well, the Veterans Services expires in April. Plymouth County Advisory Board in the parking corp. So those three need to get done.
When does veterans expire? Is it before the 24th or?
Um, no. We could do it at the next meeting.
All right, let's hold out for the next meeting if you don't mind. All right. Number two, that's Select Board announcements. Okay to move forward? Anything, Ari, you got? To check in before I miss anything?
I'll do monitoring of town administrative announcements. If you have, just look for announcements here.
Very good. All right. So Select Board announcements for this evening. Lakeville Public Library will be holding a mini golf at the library on Sunday, April 23rd, from 12 to 4. That is a Sunday afternoon. Also, Sunday and the 23rd, from 1 to 4 p.m., there'll be a celebration birthday at Betty's Night. Activities will include an opportunity for the kids to plant some seeds and take home and watch them grow. We will also be giving away free pin oak tree seedlings, wall supplies last, air invest for mass fisheries and wildlife being present to let kids try out their archery skills, which is definitely a lot of fun. There'll be nature hikes and some in-friendly activities as well. The Lakeville Arts Council will be hosting the Spring Craft Fling on April 29th, 2023, from 12 to 8 p.m. That'll be at the Loom Paw and Lodge at Tubbs Williams Camp. There will also be the crafters and artisans as one-of-a-kind handmade items purchased to give as Mother's Day or Father's Day's gifts for a special someone with a spring birthday or perhaps yourself. There will also be four adult workshops as well as a cash bar and food offering for fee from Loom Paw and Lodge. Check out the website for additional information. That is lakevilleartscouncilma.org. And we'll turn it over to Ari for a town administrative announcement.
Okay. Trying to keep it under 60 seconds since we're 6:15. Staff had a progress meeting on March 31st with the owners and management company for 300 Gold's Drive. The major fire safety issues have been addressed and the parking plan has been submitted to the Conservation Commission. Management's working with the building tenants to refine the water consumption plan with the objective of lower net usage, which was one of our major problems there. Our next meeting is scheduled for later this month. We also had a kickoff meeting on March 31st with the development team at La Barron Hills for the DPW building, which, as you recall, the board approved on March 37th a donation agreement. Stonebridge is moving forward with final site assessment and anticipates getting construction underway in late spring. Pleased to announce that we received a payment on April 5th of $332,800 from Plymouth County for the first phase of the ARPA project. As you know, this approval, this project has been long delayed due primarily to the county's internal process. Nevertheless, we're appreciative of the county's support and eager to get underway. Environmental partners, which perform the initial feasibility study, will handle design permitting and bidding. Our GAS coordination group has begun meeting regularly. The previously requested data set has been uploaded to our GAS platform, and we are working with Totten and Middleborough to obtain utility infrastructure data. In addition, we have identified a number of demographic, environmental, and infrastructure layers that are available from the state at no cost, and we're going through those right now. Procurement is underway for the outdoor stage cover. As you call it, it needs to be rebid. The RFQ for the Fire Station Project Manager will be released this week. The installation for the ramp at the old library will be released next week. It's in the Clear Pond Shed open on April 6th, and we're currently going through the bids. The next regular meeting of the Select Board will be on Monday, April 24th, at the Lakeville Police Station. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ari. I know we're a minute over, but real quick, would you mind just reminding the audience what Phase 1 of that ARPA plan was?
That was, so there are a couple pieces to it. As Leah and Lorraine will remember, the original proposal had been to put in, to install water to several locations, at parks, the old library, Old Town Hall, and the John Pond Park in Proton Williams. The county determined that a portion of that was not eligible, mainly the installation of the restroom facilities at Old Town Hall. So we call it Phase 1, everything but. And then Phase 2, which will be, which will include that, they approved through the revenue replacement round. So that'll be the next phase that we'll also be able to move forward with.
Any questions for Ari and what he shared tonight?
No.
All right. Madam Moderator, thanks for letting us go over two minutes. Turn it over to you for Agenda Item 4.
Thank you. We have our school committee members on Zoom. Presuming that we do, I don't see them yet. I call this joint meeting of the Select Board and the School Committee to order. Oh, there they are. And this is to discuss or to appoint, reappoint Gary Mansfield to the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School District Committee. So welcome, everyone. I need a motion from the floor.
Excuse me.
Hmm?
Oh, yes. Could I get a roll call of what school committee members?
Oh, we should. That makes perfect sense. Let's get a roll call of the school committee members.
Steve Owen.
Steve Sylvia.
John Burke.
Okay, so we have three. How many do we need for a quorum?
Let's see. The committee's made up of the three selectmen and the members of the committee. So there are four members of the regional school committee, Lakeville. So that's seven, so we need four, if my math is right.
Yes, we have a quorum. We do have a quorum. Okay. Now I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, reappoint Gary Mansfield as the Old Colony Regional School District Committee with an expiration date of May 1st, 2026.
Thank you.
Second to motion.
Second. Great. Discussion. Hey, we have no discussion. We can go right to a vote.
I just want to thank him for volunteering to do that again.
He's great. He's really great. Okay, so why don't we do a roll call vote? Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Day, aye.
Carboni?
Aye. Okay, we'll go to Mr. Owen.
Aye.
And Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
And Mr. Burke?
John Burke, aye.
Let the record show, it was unanimous. And we have no other business, so we need a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
For adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Such a heavy lift.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item 5. This is supposed to be a liquor license hearing for an alteration of premises for the Back Nine Club. I believe we will not be having this hearing this evening. Is that correct?
We will not.
Okay, so there was paperwork issue and a recent extension from the ABCC that will actually allow them to continue operating as they were, which is serving garbage in their exterior tent. It's about 40 by 60 feet if you've opened over there until approximately this time next year. We'll see if we have to go through the process at that point. So if there are no questions, we'll move on to the next item, which is many pages down our page. All right, we're at 6:20, so we're not having a hearing at 6:30. Should we remind anybody that comes in at 6:30 that we're not going to do that, Tracy? In case they came in for the time?
There shouldn't be anyone here. I spoke to her today.
Great. Thank you. We still got about 24 minutes until we can meet with FinCom, planning board a little later. So let's see. Perhaps we move down to, is Frank here? Frank's here. Frank, would you like to go home early tonight? All right. Let's move then, I believe, to Article 10 if we can, have Director Moniz come up. Once I go through 20 pages of information there. Evening, Director. How's it going? So I'll turn it over to Director Moniz in a moment here, but this is the Agenda Item to be discussed and have a possible vote on approving transfer station fee increases. So, so what is yours?
So last time we had any increases at the transfer station was 2019. Obviously, since then, every year, across the board, everything's gone up on the contract. Every contract, so as far as bulky waste and recyclable costs, just about everything crossed the board since 2019 has gone up yearly. So it's a modest increase in the sticker price, going from $60 to $70 with no change to the additional vehicle price. Same thing with the current bag prices. So we, again, we just renewed the contract. Just like I spoke, every year, the contract pricing has been going up since 2019, the last time we had an increase. Also, the large bags, we went up to 33-gallon bags. We currently have 30, but we had a lot of residents that were requesting the larger bag. So current bag price, $12.50 for the large, $8 for the small, we'll go up to $15 for the large, $10 for the small. You have the two increases I have on the transfer station price list are non-recyclable mattresses. So basically, we're only putting them level with what our cost is to dispose of them now, which is $125 each to dispose of any non-recyclable mattresses. That's gone up in the last year, I believe, from, let's see, it was 60 to 125. And we're also exploring a few ways of residents being able to, Jen actually just posted it, and it's a few companies that come out and will pick them up. So for people who can't dispose of them themselves, they'll come in and pick them up, and the price is relatively the same as what we'd be charging. The other line items we'll be going up on is the bulky waste, which is contractor, contracted waste, or, you know, any kind of home project type things, kitchen remotes, bathroom remodels, things of that nature, everything that coincides with that. The price on that, of course, has gone up quite drastically. We're getting, we're just putting minimums on there, which really isn't much of an increase on the minimums, and we're getting rid of the maximum costs because there really shouldn't be a maximum cost considering the cost per ton right now to dispose of these materials. The one last item that we're going to push through, which again speaks to the fact that the cost going up, both with bulky waste, so the contracted disposal and brush. So what we've seen in the last couple of years is a huge increase in contract, commercial disposal at the transfer station, which is quite the burden. It's, it's much more than we should be getting. It's set up more for residential, where people are bringing in small amounts, doing small projects and bringing them in. Now we're seeing people coming in with big trailers, filling up our dumpsters in basically one shot. And the reason they're doing so is because we're, the rate we're charging is much less than what they're getting charged as tip and fee going to ABC, or Harvey, I should say. Right now, Harvey minimum fee is $2.15 to bring in anything at the Harvey. So obviously, they're trying, you know, to cut costs, and they're doing so by doing it at the transfer station. The transfer station, I think, to keep pricing, that's why these, these increases are like modest increases. We want to keep it, you know, we don't want to scare anybody away of our current residents that are using it. But at the same time, with the increase in brush and the increase in bulky waste that we're seeing is really affecting the budget and the operations as far as what we're seeing coming in. So what we're, what we're going to do is put out a flyer while, when we start selling the stickers, next week actually, which will explain to the, anybody who's commercial that they can still purchase a sticker to use it for their municipal solid waste disposal, which is their bag trash and their recyclables. They will no longer be allowing the commercial people to be bringing in brush or bulky waste.
That's, that's about it. Any questions for the director?
Yes. So there's not going to be a maximum charged for the bulky waste?
No.
Okay. I just, I thought the way it was written that if instead of starting at, let's say, $5, it was going to be 10 to 15, or then the Mets line, 25 to 100. How is it determined how much?
So that's another reason why it becomes tricky with the commercial, because they're bringing in such large amounts so often. So this is all gauged through just the experience of my transfer station guys that are basically guessing at the weights because we don't have a scale in place. The cost of a scale is pretty large. I mean, at some point, it's something we can look into, but there's never been a scale there. And it's really not an issue when you're dealing with residents because they're not bringing in large amounts. So it's pretty easy to get a guess of what they're bringing in.
Okay. I do, actually. The vendor that we get the trash bags from?
Yep.
Have we determined the other vendors for those bags? Because with the proposal going up to $15, you know, for large, which are going to be larger according to what you indicate here. Those bags are very flimsy, and I'm sure that the residents can agree that, you know, for the amount of money that we're spending for, you know, five bags, we're constantly having to double up on bags or, you know, add another bag in the bag for that. So is there some way that we can maybe see what else is out there for vendors that can provide a stronger bag for the price that we'll be paying?
Well, we have looked into the different pricing. So just like anything else, it's the thicker the bag, the more cost. So then we could get a thicker bag, but then we'd be seeing a larger increase than what we even see here. The majority of people are using these bags, I mean, they're putting, I know exactly what you're saying, they're putting bags in bags. It's kind of, that's how, from where I've seen, it's kind of like that across the board, no matter what town you're in and things like that. When you see people disposing, typically, there's bags in bags. The bags are really just a way to offset the cost of the disposal of municipal solid waste between the bags and the stickers, which even now is, you know, hoping to break even then.
But I know, yeah, but I understand, you know, the initiative with it, but with the bags getting that much bigger and they're not changing the thickness of the bags, they're spending more money, it's just, you know, this is feedback that I'm just sharing, that it's more frustrating than it is trying to...
Well, now with a bag that's ten percent bigger, you'll have more weight in it that's possible to tear it. Gets a little easier to do another.
I mean, is there... Because I know you're trying to offset that price, so it's not like we can just stick with the smaller bag with the same price, but...
And also keep in mind, this increase is not just from this most recent contract price. This is an increase since two thousand and nine, so we've been steadily increasing since then. This is just to basically get us back level.
Thank you.
Only two questions I had, I should have thought to reach out to you a couple of days ago, so apologize for not, which was, how does your crew classify like large SUVs these days? I mean, mine's got the same cubic footage as a pickup truck would. Where does that fall in car versus pickup?
I mean, you know, it really depends. So people can bring in a pickup truck load and could just have a couple of things in it. So they may even charge them less than what the minimum is for the pickup truck load. The guys, they deal with it every day, all day. And they, I mean, I think anybody who uses a transfer station knows they're pretty fair. They try to work with the people to make sure that, you know...
They're super friendly. The only other question I had was, how do we define a large trailer? Like, I'm not expecting it's the person that rolls up with, you know, a four-by-eight trailer, but the people that are coming up with like a forty footer, roll back and want to fill your dumpster up. Would we want to say like a cubic feet or something on this? Just to remove any chance of your guys getting yelled at by someone to one of these monsters?
We could.
Maybe next year, near after.
Yeah.
Just a question. All right, so mostly you're really just keeping up with the times here. That's about the majority of the story. If there's no other questions, I'd motion to approve the increase in transfer station prices.
I'll move. Second.
All right. Member Fabian? More discussion?
Yeah, just one more comment. I just, you know, I know that they do it every day, but if we should get complaints on the maximum there, I would, you know, maybe we can figure out if people are complaining if they're the commercial or the resident. My sense, especially from what Frank says, is that it's gonna be commercial.
Likely.
But, I mean, they're still dumping way cheaper than they could anywhere else. So, you know, can you just let us know if we start getting complaints on that, but other than that? I'm an I.
Okay. Any other discussion there?
Nope.
Okay. Carboni?
Aye.
J, aye?
A B and aye.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, we still got thirteen minutes, FinCom, sorry. Let's see. Let's jump to fifteen. Select Board Member Two, Serped Commissioner. Let's see, click, there's another paper.
That's different than what we have in our packet.
We can get the fifteen. I could have read it wrong, too. I got fifteen...
Fifteen.
It's fifteen.
Well, maybe that's the pre-revised version?
No, this is the one that went up on the town clerk's...
There was two.
Posting fifteen, it says, discuss a possible pool of ton and water application before fifty millennial circle.
I've got that for sixteen.
There was an update.
There was a revised version of the agenda that got posted because of the, because of what we left out.
Didn't, we got the revised one in our packet.
You did? It was revised in your packet?
Okay.
I didn't, I pulled it down from the website.
Whichever number it is.
Great.
All right. So, Member Carboni, you're our current representative. I know you've got a great deal of interest and love working in the Serped. Is that something you'd like to continue doing for the next term?
I'm doing it, thank you, yes.
All right. Fabian, any comments?
Nope. I make a motion that we appoint Member Carboni to the Serped Commission. The term appointed would be May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three to May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I'll step down and second that motion. Go to a vote. Member Fabian?
Aye.
Member Carboni?
Aye.
Member J, aye. Thank you very much. You got that, Trace?
Who was first?
Uh, Leah. All right. All right. Go to...
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Sure.
Hello?
Okay, we'll take a short recess. If the Member Fabian's back. Yes. Project a little more? All right. I always forget that this doesn't have a speaker back. Sorry about that.
Revised agenda? I didn't get a copy of the revised agenda.
It's in the packet.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, I had downloaded the one from...
The one that was written in the packet was correct.
Because the one that was posted is the one that I go by. I didn't realize there was another posted one on the agenda.
It was the revised posted, yeah.
Yep, I didn't get a copy of the revised posted, so...
Show me the packet, I know what happened.
Okay.
My version of the packet's got the right one.
Sorry, I just found the right page here. So my intent is to go to Item Number Twenty. Discuss a possible vote on a request from Lakeville Arts Council to place an A-frame sign on town property to advertise the Spring Fling event on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. So as we mentioned during the announcements, April twenty-ninth, we'll be having a Spring Craft Fling event. And this would be to put a A-frame, let's see here, at intersection of Creasing Street, Route Seventy-Nine, Rhode Island Road. They'll remove that by May first or sooner, it says. This is pretty straightforward. Any questions on that?
No.
All right. Leah?
No questions.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the Lakeville Arts Council's request to place an A-frame sign on town property to advertise the Spring Fling event.
So, did you so move?
Yes, you did.
Second.
All right. Fabian?
Aye.
Carboni?
Aye.
J, aye. Thank you, Arts Council. Item Twenty-One. Discuss a possible vote to ratify the board's vote on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three regarding Richard McCamara's proclamation. I will recuse myself from this vote since I wasn't part of the original one.
I make a motion that we ratify that vote that we made on March twenty-seventh for the proclamation as it was posted in the, no, it wasn't posted, as it was read at that meeting.
Second.
Okay. Member Fabian?
Aye.
Carboni?
Aye.
J is recusing, or abstaining, I should say. And six thirty-seven.
Where are we going?
Uh, we're looking, looking, looking.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said...
No, 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 hang on. Who do we have with us today that we could help get home earlier?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
Yep.
All right. So let's go to Discuss a possible vote to approve publicway license applications for some multi-sports events, LLC. The Holy Cranberry Tri-Fest on August twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and Patriot Half Triathlon on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Nineteen.
All right. Back to the place. All right, so does anybody that would like to speak to these events? Would you like to speak to these events, sir?
Yes, so thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Mark Walter. I own and operate some multi-sport events. The event company that is producing the Patriot Half Triathlon, which is on Saturday, June seventeenth, and the Cranberry Tri-Fest, that'll be on Sunday, August twentieth, here at Ted Williams Camp. Patriot Half is based at Cathedral Camp in East Free Town. It's a triathlon where participants swim, bike, and run. The bike course will come through Lakeville between the hours of about seven-thirty to ten a.m. The course has been presented to the police, have approved it. The fire department has also approved it, and we're here requesting approval of the application for public access.
Okay. First, I'll ask, are you any concerns on your side from any of the department heads? It sounds like those conversations have taken place.
There are none of the conversations, especially regarding the police details and some lessons learned from prior years. I think hopefully we'll be able to deal with those issues this time around.
Okay. Members Carboni or Fabian, anything you'd like to ask?
I always like to reiterate, especially because I live on one of the roots, that honestly, I go through this and I pay attention and I vote for it, and I forget all about it until I see the postcard that comes to the house. So I really appreciate that, you know, and I know other folks in my neighborhood have said the same thing, that they really appreciate getting the postcard. They're like, oh, yeah, that's right, it's this time of year. So if you could, you know, make sure to do that, I know it helps folks a lot.
And I'd just also like to say for folks at home, I think my two teammates here made this happen in the last year or two, where we now have a more formal publicway license application, where we recover costs for police details, keeping the roads clean, et cetera, to make sure that when these events do come through, we're not just giving away essentially free resources for folks to come and use everything that we've got. So that is in order. They've got their fee estimates all done. They've also provided a certificate of liability insurance just in case something were to happen. So there's a lot more behind the scenes that happens just to get one of these events off the ground. So with that said, if there's no other discussion...
Um, one more thing.
Go forward.
Last year, I believe, the donation that was made by your organization went to, it was split between the town of Lakeville for Betty's neck twentieth anniversary and Friends of the Lakeville COA and Friends of the Lakeville Free Public Library. So that was great, because we turn around and, and I, same, you're letting us decide what to do with the money, right?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, as a organization that's trying to support healthy living, fitness, anything that's related to that in town is always preferred. But ultimately, it's your decision.
Great, thank you. All set.
Awesome, thank you.
So both permits, because I kind of talked more about Patriot, just want to make sure we're okay on both then, approval of both?
I believe so.
Yeah, the other one is the one that just uses the one road, right?
Right, the first one, then June one, and then the August one is a little more comprehensive here.
Triathlon.
Let me ask, Tracy, do you prefer these to be individual votes or bundled together?
You can do both. I would say, though, that the board typically votes to split the donations, because they send us three checks. They send us multiple checks on the split.
Okay.
Because if it's going different places, they all need to deposit it.
But we can name those at a later time, correct?
We can.
Okay, let's do that, so we can all do a little research and decide what we'd like to nominate. So, so both in one is okay, though?
Sure.
No, nothing problematic? So entertain a motion to approve the publicway license applications for both the Cranberry Tri-Fest and the Patriot Half Marathon. Patriot Half?
Patriot Triathlon.
Thank you, sir.
So moved.
Could you please include the dates?
Yes, thank you very much. Patriot Half Marathon is to be taking place on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, estimated between seven-thirty a.m. and ten a.m. Let me back up. The Cranberry Tri-Fest will be on August twentieth, twenty twenty-three, estimated to be between seven-thirty a.m. and twelve-thirty p.m.
Second.
Okay. Member Carboni?
Aye.
Member Fabian?
Aye.
J, aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. Oh, is there anything we can do in two minutes? Let's see.
Eighteen, probably.
Eighteen?
Yep.
There we go. All right, so discuss a possible vote on the request from Council of Aging Board of Directors to appoint Nancy Richmond as a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors. All right.
I make a motion that we, we have an email, so I make a motion that we appoint Nancy Richmond as a full member, her term to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
All set.
Any discussion?
No, it looks like we'll have to reappoint her, because it's only through July.
Yeah.
They like having a full board, so...
Yep, that's okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
The reason for that is it's a three-year stagger term, so in order to keep our board members straight, that's why.
All right, appreciate that. All right. We got a first and a second discussion. Member Carboni?
Aye.
Member Fabian?
Aye.
Member J, aye. Thank you very much. Six forty-four. Come on now. All right, we're being too efficient. We have thirty seconds. We got everybody here. Nice. Nice to see you all.
Want to do the dates?
You want to do the dates? Squeeze the dates in? Sure, that's number twenty-two. All right, possible select board meeting dates for May, June, and July. Ari, what do you got?
So just using normal timing of second and fourth, Wednesday of the month, the next three months, we have May eighth, which is town meeting, we were doing it just before the town meeting. It's going to be a busy, taking care of, May twenty-second, June twelfth, June twenty-sixth, July tenth, and July twenty-fourth.
Okay. Those all sound good. Does anybody have any concerns on those at this time?
Just why didn't we go with June fifth and June nineteenth?
We're just going with typical second and fourth.
And just leave it at that?
Yeah, that's what we've been using.
I'm totally fine with switching that up. If there's a lack of business to...
There's no specific reason.
Right, no, because there was a three week. There was an extra week between one of them.
It's kind of mathematically impossible for there not to be at some point.
No, I get that. No, I'm fine with the dates presented.
Any concerns yet?
Um, I'm always about less is more, so even in July, if, you know, there isn't a ton of business, which we do have all the appointments, sometimes that's the bulk of one meeting, I'm okay with.
Yeah, I think we can pencil them in.
For future planning.
If we see a lack of business coming, maybe we push them out a week or so.
I think in August, there's going to be some...
Yeah, maybe, yeah, in August. I think last year, we might have had one meeting somewhere in there, so I'm flexible with that.
All right, sounds good. Down to the dates in front of me here, we'll entertain a motion to... Do we need to vote on the dates?
You don't need to vote.
We need to vote?
You don't need to vote.
No, you don't need to vote on that one.
I'm looking up online, sorry. Sounds good, thanks, Ari. All right, six forty-six. So six forty-five, we are scheduled to meet with the Finance Committee to discuss a possible vote to approve the FY twenty-four operating budget and capital plans that will then go forward to town meeting. Ari, would you like to provide any?
I believe they have organization on their agenda as well.
Oh, yes.
To open the meeting in.
So we would like to open their meeting. We need to organize.
If I, you don't have a chair or vice chair at the moment?
Go for it.
Okay, this is the April tenth Finance Committee meeting, starting at six forty-seven. Members Katie DeRozio, Christopher Plonker, and Larry Constant are in attendance. So we can start with the first item, reorganization. Entertain a motion to nominate a chair.
I nominate Chris.
Can't you do that to yourself, Chris?
I guess I'm sitting here. So, Member Katie DeRozio?
Aye.
Aye. And I guess I will vote aye as well.
Larry smiled way too much at that.
You're too quick on that. So the vote passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, do you need to do any other organization? Are you going to be a vice chair tonight?
Oh, yes. Nominations for vice, I'll entertain a motion for a vice chair, and I will make a motion to nominate Member DeRozio.
Second.
And, so, the vote?
Aye.
And Member Plonker, aye?
Aye.
That was like so funny, really.
Unanimous, vote carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I just add at this point that, I don't know if I'm jumping here, but we did talk about last week and we advertised, right, for the...
Yes, we have.
For the vacancies, so that has gone out, and I think we've received at least one.
That process would be, interest goes to Tracy, you forward that to Finance Committee, they vote on a recommendation to us, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, recommendation.
Because they're an elected board, it would be a joint appointment between the Finance Committee and the Select Board. So I send them the letters of interest, and then I hope that we could meet on April twenty-fourth to get them one, if not two, members. And that's, and then you guys just all take a vote, majority wins.
We're gonna need to have a joint meeting on the twenty-fourth anyway to him do for warrant review, so...
Okay, all right, send me what you got.
So, Mr. Chair, I understand, so you'll, say we get five applications. You will select the two, present the two to the Select Board during the...
No, we...
No, it's a joint, we...
You'll get all five.
We're all funding in one committee, basically.
We'll all vote.
Or decide if you want to interview or whatever you decide you want to do. Okay. It's kind of a series, right, your process goes.
Okay.
All right.
So we're prepared to provide an overview of where we are on the budget. Mr. Hassett here.
Is that my cue?
Mr. Cue.
Good evening.
You got the floor.
So in your packet, you have a, a multi-page document. Um, the lead sheet exhibit is an updated.
I thought you made them copy.
I think you posted.
Uh, I see one over there.
Okay. Um, so, um, we have an updated, uh, version since the original budget was presented February 13th, um, based on all the changes and, and the feedback from the budget review meetings we had and discussions during the month of March. Um, so as you'll see, we, we still have a proposed, um, balanced budget for FY24. The second page, I've offered a summary of what the changes are since the printed document in February, and I'll just go through that real quickly. Um, we did receive the, the governor, uh, governor's budget was, was released, um, several weeks after our budget came to you, um, as is allowed for the, a new budget, a new governor, excuse me, um, and, uh, state aid, uh, estimates came in a little over a hundred thousand, less than we anticipated. Most of that, as we reported to you at the time, related to, um, the smart growth line on the, on the cherry sheet estimates, and we've been assured by DOR that that will be recalculated in, and when the uh, next version of the cherry sheet is issued, which has not happened to date. So we're going with the lower number forward for town meeting. We've also, um, lowered local receipts based on our estimates, based on feedback we had in the results of operations through March, um, particularly in the area of permits, and a little bit in motor excise and ambulance receipts. So about $295,000 reduction in estimated local receipts. Um, on the expense side or the budget that will be presented to town meeting for consideration, uh, there have been a few changes. One add, uh, which was $2,000 for grave markers to be added to the veterans' expense budget. And, um, the other changes were all reductions, um, from our placeholder numbers for education, uh, based on final votes from the various school committees. Freetown, Lakeville, um, final assess or approved assessment is about $239,000, better than, um, our placeholder Old Colony of Oak Tech, uh, just under $99,000. And, uh, the Bristol County Agricultural School, uh, one fewer student. So it's about $38,000 savings. Uh, so that was really what allowed us to reduce our local receipt estimates. Um, so we still have a, a balance, proposed balanced budget before you. The next several pages, four pages, I believe, are a sort of town meeting high level summary of what, similar to what town meeting we'll be seeing. Um, and again, this evening you'll be looking at the column to the far right entitled FY24 Town Administrator Recommends. So this incorporates those few changes that I mentioned. And the last of those four pages, um, displays for you the two enterprise funds, the park and the solid waste, um, enterprise funds, uh, both of which have modest, uh, tax subsidies. The last two pages in your, your handout are, um, the capital committee's approved five-year capital plan. And again, for town meeting in May, we'll be focusing on the FY24 column. I will point out to you that there are a few items on that column that will not be going before the May town meeting. And they have notations, um, from the top, the, uh, possible further design costs associated with the fire station. That will not be coming before the May town meeting. Uh, weatherization and stabilization of the Peach Barn, again, is, is, uh, not being brought forward at this time, but we anticipate, um, both of these may require a vote of a town meeting later in FY24. Um, and, um, we do have one item that the board may discuss later tonight after this portion of the meeting, uh, with regard to the animal shelter. And we have, it's recently come to our attention that we do need to look at, uh, possible roof replacement, uh, and that would qualify under the capital plan. It's not in the capital plan, so it may be something that we'd look to, um, add, uh, have the town consider in the fall. And with that, I open it up to any questions or?
Uh, my only question would be, is there any particular reason why to defer the Peach Barn in the design construction at this point? Is it just timing on those projects or?
Yeah. It's, it's not, I don't, we don't have confidence in the number, you know, at this point. We have a rough estimate.
Okay.
So we're going to spend some time developing that. Also going to look for grant money, try to expand a little bit. As you know, there was, there's an application, um, for Mass Works, um, whatever they call it, that was not for growth, um, for, uh, for Peach Barn project that's making its way through the process right now. That'll give us much more information as to what we need to have as far as local match goes. Won't be higher, but we just want to make sure we've got the right number.
Okay. Lorraine, Leah, any questions for yourselves this time?
Nope. I'm all set.
So the number that we're looking for, Todd, if you can just.
Sure.
The, the bottom line, um, total number?
Oh, sure. Um, so for the, the general fund operating budget, it's 34 million, 255, 645. It's almost to the, it's in the.
Right there.
Page three or four?
Yeah. And it's on the cover page as well, toward the bottom.
Yeah, I got it.
And Todd, do you think we've got a handle now on, you know, going forward, local receipts with that downturn in building and whatnot? What's it?
Yes, I think this is a much better, more conservative approach. And it also, it sets us up well for 24 and, and possibly some expansion for 25.
It's a very conservative number.
All right. Um, any specific questions from finance committee? No. Things that, it looks like they've mostly stayed the same, a couple tweaks and mostly the right direction, I'd say. Maybe gotten better than what we started for sure.
Yes.
I, I am, I mean, just for the record, I'm a little concerned, um, on the, on the regional school district. It's good. Our number's down. We're very happy about that. It's, the increase is about 1.9%, I think. Um, and which is, you know, a very low number, but that's partially done by, um, by bringing in E and D. And there's been a lot of talk about using E and D, but, you know, to be honest, the same thing is us using free cash for top operating budget, it's one-time money. And so, you know, balancing, it doesn't matter what you balance, they're using Chromebooks, which are, you know, technically, I guess, an equipment item or a capital item, but really, really aren't based on how long Chromebooks last. It's a bit problematic, I think. That, and then, um, the other issue they have going forward are those SRO positions. They have $380,000, $330,000 in, in, um, positions that are funded by federal grant money, which will run out next year. So, um, they, they, you know, we're, we're good this year, but, but they're, they're going to have a challenge next year.
All right. All right. So I just want to say kind of, since this is the last time I think we'll talk about this until town meeting, unless something comes up, um, I was very happy, um, watching this process go through and having conversations with some of you kind of on the sides, not just at our meetings. And I was very happy to see where the regional school district came down and figured out a much better number in the end. So thank you for everybody to help to push on that. Times are tough for sure, but I think you've come out with something, and everybody has worked together to come out with something that I think is as conservative as we can be before we start probably cutting services and such. So, you know, thank you for getting us here, uh, looking towards the future and identifying some of the trends that you just mentioned there to say, yeah, these are areas we do have to keep an eye on, just to make sure that we respond sooner than later. They don't want us to be reactive and kind of get caught with our pants down. So just really thanks to everybody. Thanks to finance committee that's weighed in and all the department has and everybody else that's been part of this. Tracy, do you need a vote from each committee or one?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you. Do you guys have any, um, further discussion or comments and take a vote?
Yep.
Well, it was pretty much the same as last one. We just got first.
Finance committee just wants to say for the record that, uh, we appreciate the work that Ari and Todd have put in the budget together. We, the work we did, and looking forward to keep working with, uh, both Ari and Todd over the coming year. Thank you.
And I do want to say, Mr. Chair, before you guys take a vote, you know, we'd like to find ways to get your committee more involved too. So let's, you know, find ways in the future to expand your role and get you a little bit more involved.
Yep. And we do have some ideas to talk about future meetings.
Cool. Looking forward to it. Want to take a vote?
Oh, okay.
You guys go first.
Make a motion, right? Entertaining a motion to accept the proposed recommended budget.
Second.
Costin, aye.
Plonker, aye. Vote carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, let's say that again.
Capital as well?
Yep.
All right.
I see a motion to approve the capital budget.
A second. Costin, aye.
Plonker, aye. Vote carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right. Uh, does your committee have any other business this evening?
Don't do now.
I think so.
You do now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, to Chairman Plonker, um, I have some sets of minutes to be back that I will be getting out to you, um, from the budget meetings. So, um, you'll have those to vote on on the 24th.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Tracy, you okay with them closing if they wish at this point before we vote?
Uh, yeah, they're good to go.
Okay. You might too.
Contain a motion to close the meeting at 7:02.
Second.
Oh.
Sorry. Costin, aye.
Plonker, aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Uh, over to the select board. So let's combine, uh, entertain a motion to approve the recommended FY24 town budget and FY24 capital improvement plan.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Carboni? Fabian?
Aye.
Day, aye. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Todd. We've still got a little while until meeting with the planning board, 7:15. So let's see if we can knock out a few more things. We do like to do the meeting minutes that we have to approve.
Can do that.
So, art, uh, item 23 on the agenda, discuss some possible approval of select board meeting minutes, uh, February 6th, 2023 and March 13th, 2023. Um, I was not a member at that time, but do you have any corrections you'd like made to those minutes?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the select board minutes for the meeting of February 6th, 2023.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Carboni?
Aye.
Fabian?
Um, aye.
And Day abstained.
I'll make a motion that we approve the March 13th, 2023 select board, um, meeting minutes for discussion.
Second.
Discussion?
On page one, um, under the public hearing to review and possibly vote to sign the cable television renewal license granted to Verizon New England Incorporated, I'd like to include that the attorney for the cable advisory committee, um, I'm, I'm not sure what Mr. August's first name is.
William.
Was also in attendance at that meeting as he is referenced, um, in responding during the minutes. Did you get that, Tracy? Okay. Page three, um, kind of the, under discussion, under the second paragraph, uh, last sentence, um, the items that Nile, uh, Connors and Paul Train, I would put of Verizon. Could not move on where, um, just so that, and reflect in the minutes, we know who is, whether we're representing. And. Did you get that, Tracy? On page six. Halfway down, um, middle of the paragraph. If they are going to deny our students entry, do we want? And then I think we need to add the word to continue to fight. As it reads now, do we want continue to fight? And that's all I have for suggestions.
Thank you for those. Anything else leave?
Nope. I'm all set.
All right. Uh, member Carboni?
Aye.
Fabian? And Day abstained. Thank you. Uh, they see Paul. Yep. Paul, want to go home? All right. So we've got facilities manager Paul need with us. I believe we'll go to item 12.
Do you want to do 11 and 12?
Can we do those together?
They're, they're separate, but they're both facilities, really.
Yeah, we can do those together. Those should be quickish. Paul, do you have any preference on senior center or animal shelter you'd like to do first? Nope. Okay. Let's, uh, start with 11 then. So discuss impossible vote to approve the senior center addition feasibility scope of work.
So I'll, I'll take that. Um, there's, uh, as Lorraine and Leah will recall, um, this was discussed back in February. Um, we have a, um, we have money in the capital budget to do feasibility study for an addition. At the time, we proposed, I wrote forward a draft scope of work from the towns on call project manager for the study. There's some questions regarding the background of the, of the firm, which I provided to the board. Um, and, uh, the full study is estimated at $36,000 through final presentation. So we respectfully request that the board, the board approves the scope, the scope of work that we can start to move the project forward.
Lorraine, Leah, anything you'd like to add since you've been more involved with this to date?
Um, no, we had already put together, um, a committee.
All right.
People, so that, that part's already done, but otherwise we just need to approve this.
All right.
So I don't know if I should bring it up now or wait until, um, discussion, but, you know, we have a capital budget of $40,000 for the study and the estimate proposal came in at $36,000. So if you can go to page, the last page, under, um, the professional fees, it gives us a very high level breakdown of what that $36,000 comprises of. I would, I would like to see that broken down a little bit more of what each of those phase one, two, three, and four category represents.
Do you have a particular deliverable you'd like to see there?
Um, just how did they arrive at those numbers?
Okay.
Uh, the pre-design comes to 6,500, the schematic design's 22,000, the statement of probable cost, costs, 3,500, and the completion and presentation of the feasibility study is 4,000. I mean, I'd like to, I'm glad that it came in under 4,000, uh, 40,000, but to me, I'd like to know a little bit further what the breakdown is of the costs.
So you think it may be like, you know, how many hours went into this? Here's what we'll give you at the end?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Leah, any thoughts?
Um, nope.
Okay. Paul or Ari, who, who has primarily been working with this company you have? Uh, do you think that would be something that they could turn around in relatively quick order or?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll be happy to ask what before it was requested, but we haven't done.
Would there be interest in tabling this till the 24th? Would that put us at risk of any deadlines?
Um, well, the, um, if the board's, it would be helpful for them to know if the board's comfortable with the task order activities.
Yes.
Um, if the board's comfortable with task order activities, then you can, you know, sign off on those and I can come back with the, uh, you know, with that information. I can provide, I can provide it. It wouldn't necessarily need to be provided in formal meeting at that point.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I don't really want to see this put off. We've already been putting it off, so.
And if I can, one more, um, to Ari. If you could just explain to us why, um, we went internal with our, um, OPM versus going out to bid for this particular, um, If you could just explain to us why, um, we went internal with our, um, OPM versus going out to bid for this particular, um, study?
I think we dove into that a little bit last time as well. Um, this was a firm that we have hired as our internal, as OPM for various projects. It comes with a number, a number of projects. At the time, I was under the impression that the board wanted to get this project moving. And, um, I was instructed, you know, get a task, get a task order together, get a scope of services, so we did. Um, unfortunately, there was some disagreement as to, sort of chicken and egg conversation, a little bit about, about what had to come first and what would need to go first. And then everything sort of got deferred. Um, uh, I'll be happy to go out and do a formal procurement for this. I just think it'll take us more time. We have, um, you know, fully qualified OPM available. It's a later board's call.
Has the town established any ceiling on when using internal OPM is okay?
Um, it's more a judgment call. Certainly we have to recruit, we have to procure, we have to procure, um, you know, that, that raises some questions there. For example, on the fire station, you know, we actually had this OPM come in just to give the, the committee a sense of what an OPM does. He's happy to do that. And, um, the, uh, fire station building committee is doing a formal RFQ. So for those kind of projects, certainly, but, but for little things like the, um, the, this probably is larger you'd want to go. And frankly, uh, if it gets much larger than this, you're gonna have to procure it anyway. But, um, the little things like the, the outdoor stage pavilion, um, you know, the ramp, things that are small projects that, that we just need to get, need to get going. It was helpful to have the in-house OPM.
So taking a little closer look here, it does look like they have outlined a number of their deliverables per phase, kind of in the much more verbose, um,
They do, they do give hours.
Document they've got here. You kind of have to hunt for it a little bit, but it is in there.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a fair amount of details to what they would do.
Right.
But, but I understand, but I fully understand what you're saying, Lorraine, that you'd like to see more of how, of kind of the hourly summation, and that, that's absolutely fine. We'd be happy to bring that to the board.
Yeah, do they outline timelines in here as well? Um, how long each phase is projected to take? I won't see that.
I didn't see anything in here, but.
I can, I can ask for that as well.
And I think that also has to do with, um, once the committee convenes and discusses phases and.
Yeah, I think there was some question as to what, how it's going.
They may, they may drive some of that.
I can certainly, I, I, we have to get all that.
Okay. I mean, I, I agree, it's nice to see that this is coming under budget by 10 or 12%, that's nice.
I mean, I am, um, I am a bit skeptical that the number we have in the CIP, which I believe is 400,000, I believe, right? So the, for the project in the, in the out years on the CIP is going to be enough to do this.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, I think at that point, as we get, once we get past the feasibility study, um, we're probably gonna, 500,000. Once we get past the feasibility study, we're, we're, you know, and we have a rough idea of what this might cost, we'll certainly need to procure all of this.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, it'll, we'll see if, we'll see if it's a number that we can handle.
My hope is this would also allow us to firm up that number one way or the other as well.
That's the intention.
Once we've got an idea of what we're actually building.
At the very least, it should give us an informed estimate that we can use for things like budgeting, time being, so forth and so on. It's, it's not a complicated addition.
I'd like to see this wait until the 24th.
Table the 24th? Uh, as, as long as, um, Ari, you're confident this isn't gonna make us miss anything, I think, if that were to happen.
Best I can do is reach out to, um, George Ferrerino and ask him to put together.
Okay, all right, uh, that's fine with me.
I really don't want to see it wait. We've already been waiting. I, um, we've had, you know, the COA director here twice just to turn her away. Again, always concerned about staff time. Um, I don't see what a small breakdown of numbers, how it's gonna change anything, honestly. That's just me.
Well, I think it's important that we have the breakout, um, of those numbers as to how the $36,000 was arrived to happen.
Is the committee scheduled to meet anytime soon or are they kind of waiting on all of this? They're waiting on all of this, okay. Is there a middle ground here where would you be pleased, Lorraine, if we were to go through with this, but it is, you know, their requirement to provide those things before they see a dollar paid out?
I just don't understand why we just can't wait until the 24th. Not trying to be difficult, I just think it's important that, you know, if we're gonna vote on this, I wouldn't, I want to make sure that we're in, you know, unanimous with, um, the scope of the work is fine. But as far as the, the professional fees, I just, I want to see it broken down a little bit more, just so that we know what we're, we're.
That's fine. Can we define what that is, though? Are we just looking for hourly rates, time?
How did they arrive at the, you know, the phased, um, amounts?
I, I still don't know what you're really looking for, Lorraine. You want to know an hourly basis what they? I mean, we've, we've had some of this information for almost two months now, and it just seems like, you know, last time you had so many unanswered questions. You have every opportunity to talk to Ari on this stuff when we're not at a meeting. I just don't understand why we just can't move this forward.
Well, um, where we just received this information in our packet for discussion, um, the, the scope of work, I think that it's, it's prudent that this board discuss and, and delivery on anything that's presented to us, um, so that we can all hear the information and concerns. So I don't think I'm being unrealistic, um, asking for that breakdown. I mean, we've asked about it before in other, other projects.
It's not like it's a $12 million building and, you know, whatever.
It's not, but it could, it can set precedent on what we expect in the future from other OPMs. Um, so I think we've got a lot of other work going here. Director Fahey or she, I hope you're right behind.
There she is.
You know, sorry about that. I mean, we're all looking forward to this. I think it's definitely something the town is, you know, behind you to make sure that you can provide all the services you want. I'm okay tabling it for, for two weeks if we want to get that level of detail, but I really want us to spell out what that detail is so that we can get through this the next time. Is that acceptable?
We understand you want a breakdown of estimated hours and, um, and more information on anticipated timing.
Yeah.
Timeline, right?
Basically what it, what it would take to meet the numbers that they've included in these phases.
I can send them an email right now.
Okay. Maybe we'll hear back in the next hour.
I don't think so. He's good, but he's honest.
All right, um, so we've got plenty of other stuff going on, so let's just move on then. We'll come back and revisit it. Um, apologize, Director Fahey, but we will get there. So let's move on then to, unless there's any other discussion on that item? Yes, no?
No, just, I continue to protest. I know it's dead in the water, but, um, you know, uh, it's ridiculous because Lorraine's had two months to ask these questions, so.
We'll get at the shore.
You know, whatever, anyways.
All right, so we will then move on to the next item, uh, possible animal shelter repairs and renovations.
So as I've mentioned to the board, um, the estate did a surprise visit with the, uh, of the, uh, animal shelter. It was some, um, uh, issues that they wanted to see addressed. Um, I shared that, um, to find that report with all of you. Um, we've, um, Paul Ne and, uh, Tracy and Dave Frey, so we've been working together on developing a mediation plan to take care of, take care of the issues. Most of it can be handled with existing appropriations and/or donations. Um, there's a one capital project that Todd alluded to, maybe it's come up later on. But, um, but we feel we're in pretty good shape to be able to handle the mostly small board things. Um, I'll leave it to Paul, maybe you could probably have to walk through some of the findings.
I mean, most of it, there was, um, Dave Frey's asked to have the concrete floors sealed. Uh, that was also brought up in the state's inspection, so, uh, that's appears to be, gonna be handled through the donation account. And then everything beyond or below that can really be handled through facilities, whether I do it myself or we get, um, town electrician and town carpenter, which we have on an hourly rate now.
Okay.
And then there's the $5,000 contingency there. I don't see that being spent. But I did have to put it in there just for any enforcing conditions. But mainly it's, you know, interior doors, exterior doors, a window, trim. I'm gonna be wrapping most of the trim in aluminum coil stock. That'll eliminate any painting. But it's, it's not a normal, it's not a huge renovation.
Okay, all right. Lorraine, Leah, any specific questions?
I was just, just trying to understand how we were looking to fund this. So I know we talked about the, um, the roof that would possibly come on for a capital, and we have the contingency here, but, um, and it looks like through the donation account, it would be for the concrete floors, which would pay for that, but that miscellaneous work performed that I know we need to do, that.
There's money, we, we have the money in the facilities budget for various repairs.
Okay, so we do have for, so this is for FY23 or 24?
Twenty-three.
So it's currently in our 23 budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So I do know that Dave Frey, who's the animal control officer, was working with Paul Ne, but when Paul came on board, we gave him everything as a high priority, number one thing to get done. Um, and he was working on, Dave, with going through the animal shelter, but it was a surprise visit that we got from, um, uh, M D A R. So, um, it's not like it was, you know, Dave was working on it, Paul was working on it, and just coincidentally, this happened. But it's, um, you know, pretty much, I think they noticed what you and Dave had put down on paper prior to them even coming here, so.
I think had the state not come in and said, you know, the, the floors have to be sealed, I don't know if that would have been
Done.
In my purview, uh, based on what I thought the building needed.
Yep, but otherwise, you've been looking at the building all along, so, um, again, very happy to have a facilities person on board.
My question, not, all this is definitely useful. My question's more on the logistics side. How would we plan around all the animals that are typically there? Has Dave had a chance to think this out?
Yeah, so I talked to Dave today. Currently, there's only five dogs in the shelter right now.
Okay.
So we can transfer them to the quarantine shelter, uh, while we're doing the, so we can swap them around.
Okay, um, yep, I know how big the quarantine shelter is. I'll have to talk to him. I don't remember.
I'm gonna say maybe 600 square feet.
Small.
I'm just wondering if we have to find alternatives for bringing new animals that show up while you're trying to get this work done?
We're gonna have to, Tracy, you've talked to Dave about this. I think we're gonna have to, you know.
He has made arrangements to temporarily house, um, some of the dogs, um, if needed with, um, a boarding facility.
Okay.
At no cost to the town.
Nice, okay, perfect. Um, and we're thinking that that roof project maybe fall would come forward at town meeting, potentially?
It had a leak earlier, uh, which I fixed.
Nice.
So it's not, no longer any active leaks.
Do we have to get back to M D A R about any of this, or are they just waiting on us to do everything and then report back?
So there's no, the assessment that they did, there's no regulatory impact. There's no, there's no, there's no, um, directive in there, no timeline, anything. It's just they, 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 they did a check of the facility, said this is the thing you should try, you should try to work on. Um, my intention is to, once we had, well, after the board had, you know, indicated its dissent, uh, my, my intention had been to send a, a letter back to M D A R saying thank you for looking at, you're writing, and this is what we're doing to, to deal with the issue, so they can kind of, hopefully they can just say, okay. And not, not, you know, leave us alone for a little while. But, um, but that, that, that's the intention anyway.
All right. Are you looking for anything in particular from the board this evening on this, Ari, or just informing us?
So it's appropriated money, so there's no, I mean, I think the board would probably need to vote on the, on using the money from the donation fund. Um, but the, 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 the other part is, is this in appropriations? So, um, but if the board, you know, would like to indicate its sense of, you know, support for this, that'd be, that'd be fine. We appreciate that.
Okay.
As far as the, you would just come back to us if there's contingencies, and then we just vote on as, as needed?
We'll, we'll, we'll be transparent about this, I want you to know.
Yeah.
And then, of course, um, probably a good chance we'll be coming back for that town meeting in the fall. One thing I, I, um, the, the roof, one thing I did want to convey to the board, which I want to leave it, you know, leave behind, is, um, you know, these are expenses that weren't necessarily, um, anticipated when we, we negotiate, when we negotiate this year's agreements with the, with the, with this, with the town, with the contributing towns. So, um, my recommendation to the board would be to think hard about, um, coming back to them for the next year, maybe putting some type of facilities fee or something along those lines that, that they, you know, where they help share the, the cost of maintaining the facility, because that's not something that we've been doing to date.
Yeah, I think, I think we had talked about that, right?
We did.
It created a minimum, and I think we asked you to look at the
Yeah.
calendar of when they actually pay everything.
Right, that was our intention, but this kind of gels it a little bit, I think.
Yeah.
You know, gives it a specific purpose. And, um, I would, um, uh, suggest probably late summer. Maybe we'll give the, the, um, the, 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 the community a heads up saying, guys, just so you know, this is gonna be coming up for next year.
Yeah, I mean, the way you look at it is, if they don't use our service, currently, if they don't use our services, they don't pay anything, but we still have to have a shelter and working condition.
Available to them.
Available to them, so, and I don't really think any of them are going to, um, you know, be upset to pay a minimum $1,000 or whatever it is.
It'd still be a good deal for us, I mean, I'm not, certainly not suggesting to the board that we pass all this cost on to
No, no.
You know, but, because it is, it is still our shelter.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, it would be, I think it's worthwhile for them to share some of the load.
Yeah. Great.
Okay. All right, you know, I appreciate the update. Looks like a good list of work. Um, look at the M D A R report, and I think that, uh, it's like you, from what Ari has shared, you are getting most of that on the list anyway, so.
Yeah.
I think they'll be happy. So no, no specific action for us tonight, you need? Okay, just checking. All right.
Do we want to vote the money from the donation account or no?
Yeah, and Tracy, does that require board approval? No, it doesn't require approval.
No.
Can you make us aware if something does come up?
Yeah, I can, and if, if, if you feel more comfortable, the board feels more comfortable saying, you know, voting with some sense of approval, that's fine too. Whatever you guys want to do. I don't think there's anything wrong with voting that we support it.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but, um, regardless, unless it's real heartbreak, we'll be happy. Just go ahead and move forward.
Yeah, give, give us a heads up. If we're looking at $14 versus $2,500, maybe that's a bit of a difference.
All right.
Thank you, Paul.
All right.
Anything else, or is he free?
He's free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, would you like to get going or? Ari, do you have any other suggestions? Do we have anybody here from 415 Millennial? Could we try to get them out in case this goes like that?
Mr. Jamie here?
You are here?
Jamie's here, yeah.
Okay, um, would you mind if we try to take them so they can get out of here? Thank you, sir. All right, um, so we'll pop over to 16, uh, discuss some possible approval of town water application for 415 Millennium Circle. Something that is gonna be in this, uh, just roll your chairs, that was pretty smooth. Good evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, Jamie Biscuit with Zenith, and this is.
Number 16.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
All right, um, Ari, would you like to take the pleasure of watching?
Sure. So, um, the, uh, let me get to the number, it's number, what number are we on?
Uh, 16 on one of the agendas, depending on the version.
Okay. So this is a, um, facility, industrial box cannabis facility. There was special permit done, um, approved back in 2021, um, special permit. The, um, uh, stated that, anticipated that the, um, water usage would be, um, I believe 2,000 gallons per day. Um, the, um, that's correct.
Yeah.
Um, the requests are, I guess, subsequent to, to that. It's been some work done and assessed and, and, um, their estimates that they're gonna need. Originally, they came in with 7,500 gallons. They've come back with 58, 70 per, per day. So bring it to the board, and it's really the board's decision whether you want to move forward this, whether you want to send back for a special permit amendment or what you want to do.
Ray, would you like to share anything at this time? I, I saw your report. Thank you for the level of detail that was in that.
Sure.
That was good.
Appreciate it. I think during the, uh, the process for the special permit, I believe that the attorney writing up the, the application was just trying to estimate. Um, it, it really wasn't, um, a mechanical engineered design yet, so what we did was, after the project had received some, um, some permitting, the more detailed design happened. And so what we did was we brought together the fire engineer, the, um, the engineer that's gonna be, that was in charge of designing. the engineer that's gonna be, that was in charge of designing the feeding of the plants, how they're going to treat with the reverse osmosis, everything else. They did all the hydrant testing and flow testing that was needed. And that's how we were able to produce the detailed report that you saw.
Gotcha.
What we did was, we kind of really scaled down the numbers as best we can. The 7,500 was based on, you know, the septic system at full capacity, but that's not what we actually need at this time.
Okay. Leah, do you have any comments on this?
Just reiterate my concern that, you know, we do have several marijuana companies that are really using up, not using up, but, you know, we only have so much water to give out. It's quite the, you know, hot commodity. So I do appreciate that it went down. And I would encourage, I know everything's expensive, but I would encourage folks to just continue with whatever may be new out there, to reclaim water, whatever new may come along, just, you know, please, you know, look into it because it's, it's, we only have so much, so.
Certainly.
Yeah, understood.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Could I just ask the gentleman in the end to identify the phone?
Dominic DiMartino, I'm the owner of Chris and Garris.
Thank you, sir. I don't want to drag you out for an extra night. The problem is where this was a special permit that the Z B A did. I don't want to kind of come in and say that we're like theoretically overruling their number. That's kind of like their jurisdiction to begin to give you that number. I mean, do you, Leah, would you feel, as much as I hate to waste this gentleman's time, that it's more appropriate to go back to Z B A just to get that number, and then if necessary, come back to us?
I mean, I, I can live with that, Brian. I, like I said, I just have lots of concerns with all the, you know, the water
Yeah.
requests, so I, I would rather be sure and.
Mr. Knox?
Would it make sense to remind that by council? Just because it's part of the special permit?
Yeah, we could do that too.
The actual amount of water, or?
No, whether it requires an amendment to the special permit, or if you guys have the ability to do that without it causing a legal problem with the permit.
Yeah, because I, I wouldn't want him to have a problem later and say, one authority gave this one, one approved this one as well, so it's.
I know, we, we, at Planning Board, we've done some conditional approvals where you would approve based on the information you have tonight, conditional upon a response from council in the affirmative.
Could do that.
So then if you don't get their response, it's not approved.
Right, right.
And if it does, you know, you didn't waste any of these time if it went through, but you're at least using that as a stopgap.
Yeah, that's a good, good suggestion, I appreciate that. Ari, any quick thoughts to that idea?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, would you be open to that idea?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, I mean, if we can save you another trip and just make sure we've crossed all of our Ts.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Leah, what are your thoughts?
Um, I, I can live with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mark, that's a good idea. So, let me check out the numbers right here. So the numbers are 58, 70, is that correct? That's the new number?
That is correct.
And just out of curiosity, is there any reclamation recycling that you're looking at as well to save even from that? Or, obviously, the reverse osmosis is using a bunch up just to start.
We are looking, we are looking at that, and we have made some changes to get that number down to the 58, where we are confident that we're not going to require more than that.
Okay, all right. All right, so. All right, Leah, would you like to make a motion based on that contingency?
To. Yeah, if you could.
Yeah.
To approve the town water application for 415 Millennium Circle with a daily allocation of 5,870 gallons per day, per approval from town council, that no change to the special permit is required.
What she said, I make that motion.
I will second that motion. Leah?
Um, no, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you want to vote?
Oh, you're asking me for my vote? Oh, I thought you were asking me if I had a comment. Aye.
All right, Jay, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Hope it all works out, we have to bring it out again, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, appreciate it. And thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. All right, so apologize for the delay. So we'll move now to the joint meeting with the planning board to discuss the MBTA communities. Mr. Chair, let's open your meeting.
At this time, I'd call the planning board meeting order. This is a joint meeting between the select board and the planning board. It is 7:35 on Monday, April 10. We do have a quorum present, so we're ready to go. Do you want to start, Mr. Chair, or do you want me to?
Could I just, so the request for this came actually directly from Michelle McKegger?
Okay.
So I didn't know, Michelle, I think it was Michelle that sent the email, so I didn't know if Michelle wanted to open with.
So actually, I, my request was for a joint meeting with Freetown Select Board and Planning Board as well, because since we share a school district with Freetown, and knowing that Freetown is a commuter rail community now, they have 750 units that they really need to create zoning for in order to be compliant with us. And so that, that is quite a, you know, a lot of students that could come into our schools all at one time. So I think to be proactive, we really need to reach out to Freetown, see where they stand, because even if we are compliant with our existing 40R, which we're not sure of yet, we haven't been given that information yet, it would be very lax of us to not be forward-thinking and explore all the options.
So if you, if I could, I just want to give you a full circle on where we've been as the planning board. Mark Resnick can attest to, we've, the town has been tasked with either come up with a new zoning overlay to keep us compliant with the MBTA community's zoning. In January, we asked, there was a, a meeting with Taylor Perez from Serphead where it was potentially talked about that our current smart growth overlay zoning may comply. But that, there was a grant given, more work was done towards possibly identifying some new areas. Mark had sent us an email today. He did get response back from Serphead finally on the original question, that it appears our smart growth overlay language in the zoning, and possibly the location of the zoning may suffice. Is that accurate, Mark, would you say?
That's correct.
It's not definitive yet, they still wanted to run it by their legal, and that would have to be filed with the state also.
That's correct.
So.
So is it a scenario, or we don't know until the state says so?
Sort of, yeah. So Mark has moved forward with the disciplines to possibly identify a new area. I don't know that the planning board's fully on board with backing that, but regardless, we were sort of excited to see that we may already comply. So that's sort of, you know, step one on where we are is, do we need to make more, or are we good where we are? So we still need to figure that out. But then I, I think there are a, a number of concerns from everybody in the board about what happens with Freetown because of the regional school system.
Yep.
And we just didn't want to be complacent if there was a conversation to be had and to possibly have joint meetings with other planning boards and other select boards. I, I don't know if there'll be a resolution from that, but I think we probably should at least have some discussions.
Has, was there any other comments before? Ari, do you want to say anything else, Mr. Chair?
I was also, you know, in favor of a joint meeting with, with our planning board. This MBTA communities overlay, or what project, I guess, is under the jurisdiction because it's a zoning concern for the planning board, but it affects us as a whole town. And I was really, you know, glad to see that we were able to find the time to sit down and, and have a conversation. So I had requested through Ari today to provide some, just some information so that we're all on the same page, because I think that having this dialogue between the planning board and the select board will help us, I guess, gauge our decision on how we want to, you know, comply with this initiative. So I requested that Ari hand out a copy of the plan that Mark Resnick, our town planner, and Serphead put together as our plan to comply with the requirements. And if you have a chance, go on the MBTA communities website, and it will list all of the towns that have submitted their preliminary plan, and the deadlines that they will, you know, have to comply, and those that have not submitted it, and those that are received and not reviewed yet. I also asked Ari to provide a copy of Middleborough's town manager and planner's press release that they just recently put out. And after reading through what Middleborough has presented, I think that we have a, a lot of similarities here. So we, prior to this MBTA communities, we were an active, I guess, MBTA community in Lakeville, because we had the station in our town. And we had been proactive, and we had designated a smart growth area in which we have, you know, some development, some dense development. And I asked, you know, Ari and Mark if they could provide the numbers, and I think you did email it to me, but I didn't print it out. So over by the, the current rail station, we have Sterling Place, we have Kensington, we have the Nemasket Landing and the other development behind that. And we also, over on Route 79, we have Paul Turner, his development there. So there's a lot of units under the 40B jurisdiction that have been, you know, already built and in place. With this new commuter rail being shifted to Middleborough, we now become what we call the adjacent community. So we're not really a primary community at this point. So there were different regulations required for the adjacent. And as Mark Knox has just alluded to, that there's probably, I think we were all looking to hopefully take what we already have in place and have that be the model in which we're meeting the requirements for this. So there wouldn't be any additional work to be done to identify other zoning areas in Lakeville. So I'm hoping that it might just end there, but we're still waiting to see, is that correct?
Yes, so the steps would be, first, Serphead has to finalize their review of the language of our overlay district, to make sure that's compliant, and they're pretty sure that it is compliant. Second thing would be to look at the district and to see if there's unbuilt units in the density requirements of the district that the total of those unbuilt units would comply, and whether D H C D will accept that as a district for our compliance. I was under the understanding that we had to create a new district for the compliance, that we could use the language of the 40R, but create a new area to allow for more units. So that's, the determination is, is the, what gets submitted to D H C D. And they just released the forms to make those submittals last week. So after the planning board meeting with Serphead on Thursday, they will probably have them submit the information to D H C D. If it turns out we're fully compliant in both the district and in the language of the 40R district, then we are done. If, if they say, well, the language is fine, but you need to move the district expanded, it's not quite enough units, well, then we'll have some additional work to do in order to be compliant. But, so, that, that's kind of the steps.
Mr. Chair, if I may? I, I think we all are, are in concert with the process that we're doing. The unknown here is the effect that what Freetown does would have on the Lakeville as a whole, on the effect on the school system. And that's what we don't have any insight into or any visibility into, and that's what we're looking to have some type of visibility into.
Is that due to lack of the state providing guidance at this point? Or lack of interaction with Freetown at this point? Or how would we categorize that so far?
I would say it's, it, from our standpoint, we've not had an outreach with them.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys have had an outreach with them.
Have we?
No. But it does have potentially a financial effect on this town.
Absolutely, I mean, so I think from what I heard Michelle say, it sounded like Freetown is 750 or so?
So because they are a rail community now.
They're becoming a rail community like we used to be.
And.
And their set goal number is 750 units.
And we're down to 231, I think it was?
Yes.
Because we're now an adjacent town?
Yes. So also, because they are a rail community, they have a different compliance date. So ours isn't until the end of 2025, theirs is 2024. There's also rapid, rapid transit communities that actually have to comply by the end of this year. So, you know, we really should be watching to keep, keep an eye on what these other communities are doing, because these other communities do have active citizen groups that are, you know, pushing back, that don't want to see it happen. And we know that a lot of towns are going to struggle at town meeting just to get this town, this zoning created, because it's a buy rate housing, high-density housing.
Yep.
So there's a lot of moving pieces, and I really think.
Well, based on the, I don't know if anybody saw the news today in the interview with our governor, but she has put a major emphasis on affordable housing, major, even more so than yesterday because of the survey that came out of, of the people of Massachusetts and what they want. And the highest priority from whoever filled out this survey, I didn't fill it out here, was housing. So I'm sure there's going to be a ton of pressure coming down from the governor's office on this.
I think they look into something other than 40B, because it hasn't worked in 50 years.
I would agree, but it would take a long time to make that change.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, so it's not just the governor that's looking at housing. Our own federal representatives, Congressman Ockingkloss has been holding forums and town halls, had a webinar. And there were representatives there from HUD, all the way from HUD down. And, you know, these folks are saying there's money for, for profit and nonprofit contractors to build housing. So this isn't just a Massachusetts thing. It's definitely, and it's, it's really difficult, and I get it, to fight back, but it's coming all the way from HUD as well. So I, I share everybody's concerns with the school district. I have had some conversations, because like Michelle said, she does, she, her initial thing was to meet with Freetown, and I, I believe they're, they're willing to talk. I do know that Selectman Lopes was, said he was going to try to watch our meeting tonight, and he indicated that, you know, if we wanted to reach out, so they're not, initially, they're not opposed. I, I don't know much more than that, because I did reach out to them to say, you know, we all have the same concern. And I do know that, I believe they've done their, their initial.
Their action plan?
Their action plan.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So.
Well, I mean, can we just cut to the chase? I mean, who does what you do in Freetown?
I don't believe they have a.
They have somebody.
Do they have someone?
Mm-hmm. Yep, they have a part-time.
Can we just start with reaching out to them if we haven't yet?
Okay.
Or let me ask the planning board, how can we help you?
I think just establishing some sort of communication between us and Freetown, whether it's our board, your board, their planning board, their select board. I just think it's wise to have some conversations, at least to find out which way we're going. I don't know that we're asking for a definitive anything tonight. I think it's just, election just happened, we all have new boards, and we, we want to do something. We want to be active, if there's something that we can do to help the situation, we don't want to be sitting on our hands.
I think that's completely fair. I don't want to be caught off guard at all.
I would just request that. I would just request that the chair and vice chair be copied on whatever communications so that everybody can stay in the loop.
That's amazing.
I just have one thing too. Because we are a regional, with our sister town, Free Town, I'd like to know, maybe through Mark Resnick, look into if there's other MBTA communities that are also regional entities that are having to go through this. Because I think it would be very interesting if we were the only ones that this is affected because that might be able to give us a little bit of, you know, pushback opportunity. So I'd like to know what the playing field looks like with regards to that. Is everybody good with that?
Bridgewater-Ranham would be another potential opportunity nearby. Bridgewater has community restoration, Ranham does not.
Right.
But they'll have them in Tonne next door.
Right, but Bridgewater is already an MBTA community.
Right. But is there a similar examples of how is it being applied to them?
They, they have a combined school district.
Yes.
Bridgewater-Ranham.
Bridgewater-Ranham. So there might be others out there that, you know, because ours, now we've become adjacent, we're not a primary. And then the other sister community is now a primary.
And I would think even Dayton or Hope, too. That's a shared.
Might be.
Yeah, because those are smaller towns as well.
Yeah, it's more.
Bridgewater's a little bigger than we are, but Dayton's really.
Because Dayton or Hope, that's a little more rural, like Lakeville.
Yep. Well, and, and I mean, in all honesty, so when you look at 40B, I think it makes sense in not rural communities. You know, you can use it to encourage housing in, you know, the cities or, you know, but around these rural communities, it's almost like asking us to tear trees down to put in housing. And there's only so many trees left, and we happen to have them. So, you know, we need to be a bit protective of that. But, you know, like Nora said, you know, the first thing that the governor said at the MMA conference a few days after she was selected was, we need housing. And the message is only getting louder and louder, so.
Still don't see any homeless people.
No, there is one.
Well, fair, but I think that's by choice, not because he can't afford. Anyway, I digress. But I did, I got approached by a lot of folks on Election Day that came right up and said, how can we stop this?
Yeah.
Which I know that, I mean, we're already in so deep, I just don't think we want to get in deeper. You know, if we can maintain where we are, that, you know, we look for your assistance to, to partner with us on that. And then just, we'd like to be able to communicate either through Mark or through board to board with these other communities to see what we can do to at least, you know, slow the bleeding.
And I, I'll speak just for myself, I think that's perfectly reasonable. I don't want to be surprised by anything, and you guys don't want to be surprised by anything. I mean, look at the numbers here and say, okay, so the worst case is they come back and say, well, you've got X percentage of students in the district, so now you're going to take over X amount of Free Town's units or something.
Or half.
Double ours, right?
But it still affects the, you know, the class size.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, even if we weren't forced to build new schools, which it may come to that.
Yep. So, I mean, I'll personally do whatever's possible to, you know, partner with you and your board and make sure information is being exchanged. If there's something that hasn't been, let us know, fix it. If there's people on the Free Town side that aren't the good people to reach out to to get market information or give in information, I think we should at least know what's going on if we don't already.
Yeah, I think maybe from tonight, we can take away that if you are able to communicate with some of these, like the Bridgewater and the Ranham individually, or the Dayton or Hope, maybe, you know, create an email to go amongst the joint boards just to, you know, whether it's a bi-weekly or a monthly update on any, any stuff we've heard, to start that process. And then we can figure out how to communicate in the future.
It's almost like creating a working group of communities to say, like, okay, we've got 351 states, cities and towns, like how many of these fall under this new awkward puzzle piece of having a regional school system and having to comply?
And your neighbors in a different situation within the same school system.
Yet another variable. So maybe we find ourselves partnered with like two other towns that fit that weird mold and just exchange.
Well, most of these towns also belong to Serphead. Why can't Serphead help us with this communications?
They can, they're already working with Mark, right? I think they're more inclined to not help in that aspect.
No, but to gather the information, they most certainly can. I mean, we're all allotted hours and time of theirs, and if we want to spend them.
Right, and part of the process that Mark's working with Taylor, that she might be able to, she might have that readily available.
They may already have it.
Yeah, I'll talk to her as well.
And also, you know, I've had a few conversations with Mark, Ari, just as far as, you know, I know we have open space that's working on their plan. I, I mean, I really would like to see going forward some, you know, effort to do some planning and maybe create land trusts or, I think that's a whole thing that we haven't been really focused here ever, because we never had to be. You know, we always had plenty of land.
Well, one of the goals that we're working on is to establish a couple of things. Look at the lands that Lakeville owns, it's 106 properties that we as a town own. What are they being utilized for? Is there opportunity with some of those properties?
Yep.
And then second, looking to see within the network of the town what's available and how we want to develop that land. Do we want to make it another industrial zone? Do we need another industrial zone? Do we want to make it more of a park type of atmosphere for Lakeville? So I think we're starting to address those things with the setting of goals for not only us, but for our support team as well.
Now, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
You know, just in line with kind of what Leah was saying about a land trust, a suggestion I would have is because I know that with the new growth numbers that were really high for 2020, it was built into the budget, and now they're really low for this year. And now we have, you know, we're kind of searching for that new growth and trying to grow in a town that really wants slower, more responsible growth. I would suggest that maybe take that new growth out of the budget and put it somewhere that it could actually be used towards buying chapter land, other than just CPA. Like, we could do other things with that money so that it's not something that, if it's in the budget, now we have to find that growth because we need to always fund that growth. And we always, now we're looking to find something, to fund something that we, we might not really want, but now we have to because it's in the budget. So I would just suggest that, like, maybe think of doing something else.
And that's, I guess my point is, and for it not to fall on just one board, but again, you know, maybe we create some kind of a, I don't know, committee or whatever. But, and I, you know, I will say that, you know, I know several representatives and senators, you know, the state, and I talk to them and call them, and a lot of times their answer to, you know, we want to save open spaces, well, that's what CPA is for. And I'm like, right, but that's only so much money per year. You know, we can't save the kind of land unless we get other, you know, other money. And, you know, that's where it would be really helpful to be able to create something where we could, you know, say, these are the properties we're going to identify actively, not just wait for them to maybe come up, but actively, you know. But also, in the meantime, we have to have someone pursuing, you know, the big ones, the Fisheries and Wildlife, Nature Conservancy, that's the one I'm forgetting.
Well, you mean?
Arabang.
Arabang.
Yeah, over time here, I think we could all talk about this for four hours and then come up with great ideas. And the primary focus is the MBTA Communities. We've heard a lot of ideas of how we could, you know, comply based on what's available in town. Do we want to set some kind of rhythm of business and say, let's check in?
Four weeks.
Throw something out, two weeks, four weeks, give Mark time to at least make initial contact.
And I think the, the first two things we'd be looking at is the response from Serphead on current smart growth overlay, comply or not.
Yep.
And then the second, update from adjacent communities in a similar situation, not just Free Town, but.
Sure.
And also a joint meeting too, because I believe they have this, I think it's slated for the fall town meeting, I think, from what I saw.
Yeah.
Free Town has it for fall. So it would be great to meet with them before and then probably again after. Just, you know, see how it goes.
So if we started them every month, that would land us right on town meeting from today. Do we want to check in the first meeting perhaps after town meeting and see where we stand? Or does that bring any concerns?
Yeah, and like I said, we, we could, through Mark's email updates, have communication through then. We could schedule it, it doesn't have to be a.
Just to kind of pencil into our minds.
But I think that makes sense, maybe just, just after town meeting.
And then if there's, if there's business that's worth meeting over, then do so. If there's not, maybe it's another fact-finding mission for a couple of weeks. But I'm perfectly happy to pencil that in and say, let's, let's keep, keep it going.
Yes.
Keep the conversations going.
So the general consensus between the planning board and the select board is that we're going to continue to move forward and comply with the requirements for the state at this time?
Well, we're going to find out if we are currently in compliance and don't need to work further towards creating more zoning.
All right, all I'm saying is that we're not, we're not, we're going to continue to move forward.
We're sort of on a path and we're staying on it, but.
Right, so we're not going to vote to not comply, we're going to continue to move forward.
No, and this is discussion only for this evening, there's no vote apparently here.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, that it's consensus that we're moving forward.
We are moving forward, I think, as Mark put it well, with analyzing where we sit today.
Yep, and I'd say cautiously because we also don't want to say, yes, we comply, when maybe we want to hold off and say, we, we're going to stand with Middleborough and we're going to stand with Free Town and we're going to stand with these other communities who aren't complying because, you know, we'd do a lot better to work together rather than, you know, just stand individually. Or to just go along and see how it goes, because I think we really need to be proactive with this.
Yeah, I think people, we can say, honey, that we, we need to know where we stand.
Yes.
Is, is our smart goals now sufficient?
And if we, the discussion's over.
Yep.
Right, yeah, hopefully it's a short discussion at that point.
Yes.
If it is, then we work together to figure out.
We can move on to the next thing.
What the next step might be.
Yeah. Agreed. On that note, I think I'm safe to adjourn.
I believe so, if you'd like to.
Just before I do, I've been a bad host, I just wanted to welcome our newest member. I did do it earlier. John Cabral.
Yeah, nice to see you.
Did you get sworn in, John?
Huh?
Did you get sworn in?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Came in just when business was.
Yeah, I know.
So I make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting.
Settle.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting's adjourned. Thank you for meeting with us, I appreciate it.
Thank you, looking forward to it again. All right.
We have remaining eight, nine, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, I believe. Let's do business, hold business.
Eighteen, nineteen, thirteen, fourteen. Okay. Does anybody need a break? We're at two hours. Are we good?
I'm good.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Good night, Mark.
Who else can we work on getting out of here?
Uh, well, we have Nate.
We got the inspectional services part-time, animal inspector part-time.
Nate.
Nate's the doorman, he's got to stay right there.
Nate can only technically, can only technically do one of those, so we can do number thirteen.
Welcome.
How are you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
How are you?
All right, so we're moving to, oop, number thirteen, discuss impossible approval of job description for a part-time clerk for inspectional services.
So we have. This position was in the FY23 budget. It was deferred by the board for some time over the facilities manager discussion, but we, number of operational reasons, we'd like, we'd like to bring this forward, Nate, if you want to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, so last year, in creating the planning department, clerical position was taken out of inspectional services. And I just want to make declare clear, this part-time position is in a new position, it's just to make the department whole again. What we did within the job description, because we don't have clarity as far as the clerical support needs of the facilities yet, we left management of facilities within this job description, not management, clerical support of the facilities. However, it is clear that this clerical position reports directly to the director of inspectional services. So similar to us providing support to the Board of Health and Conservation and prior to a planning department, we provided clerical services to the zoning board of appeals and planning board as well. This will be the same function. So we'll continue to support the facilities manager in work request forms, documentation, invoice submittals and that kind of stuff.
We're not looking at it now, but if it's possible, at some point, at some point in the determined future, it could be a decision to break off facilities and do something with that. It's possible. That's not envisioned, not in FY24 budget either.
Okay. Now, the job description I have is from March 2022, so it's over. Is that a birthday cake?
Yeah.
Is there anything in here that anybody would like to, that we've learned over the last year that requires tweaking, or do we feel like it's still in a good position? Do you have any concerns on this?
We updated it more recently than that, I think it was. Went to the board in the last fall, around the time that we.
Yeah, it was, it was submitted in March and then it made its way to the board in the fall. And the only real thing is the facilities piece. But I've, I have committed to maintaining that, that status.
Okay.
And, you know, just so you know, too, is, it's important to mention that the spirit of inspectional services at the time of creation was to cross-train and create depth in the department, be able to cover when somebody's sick or on vacation, and that's what this did. So we took this job description you see before you in the part-time, and it mirrors our full-time positions. So it looks like you're throwing everything, including the kitchen sink at it, with green communities and, you know, plumbing, gas, electrical, everything. It's not saying that this person will do all of it, it's just that this person may have to cover for all of it in the event of a sickness or a vacation.
Leah, Lorraine, any thoughts on what's before us here?
I'm ready to move on it.
Okay. Ari, anything other points you have?
No, sir.
Okay. Who's supporting you in this role right now?
So that's another, that's a good point, Brian, to bring up, is currently we're using Bonnie Tucker, she's a floater, if you will, working through HR, usually designated in spots of need. This will free up that money because we got to remember, this, this, this money's been budgeted for well over a year into inspectional services. Once we fill that position, it'll free up the floater position through HR that should be able to provide coverage on the department.
We've talked about this in the past, I believe, my intention would be to bring that position back to town hall and have that, whoever that individual is, Bonnie or somebody else or whoever, have that, have the individual provide support to the town clerk and, and back up in town administration as well.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the part-time clerk position for inspectional services as presented with the caveat that we update the date from the bottom of the footer.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We got a motion in a second. So, Member Carboni?
Aye.
Fabian?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
John, why don't you come up with this one?
How's it going? Good evening, everyone, how are you?
Well, how are you tonight? Thanks for hanging out.
No worries, no worries.
All right, so item fourteen, discuss impossible approval of job description for a part-time animal inspector for inspectional services.
Correct. Just a little bit in the way, history of this position, there are two positions, duties related to inspections. The first is the inspections of things like, you know, barns and chicken coops and things like that, that house the animals, and then the, the health of the animals contained what they're in. And then there's the inspection related to communicable diseases between animals, usually rabies, but, you know, putting a stop to rabies and quarantining animals that need to be quarantined and so on. And until very recently, those functions were performed by two separate people. One person resigned from the town, you know, will allow back in. So now from that point on, one person has been doing both. So this proposal really is just bring things back to the way they're supposed to be, which is two separate people performing these functions who are able to cover for one another and so on and so on. Doesn't add headcount, doesn't add budget.
Just as an aside, it is budgeted inspectional services under the part-time inspectors. There was some confusion, there's some obvious confusion as to whether it's the animal controller or animal inspector, but.
Yeah, the name is tricky.
It's in, it's in, it's in inspectional services. This is one of the few positions that does not report to the director, though, reports through the health, through the board of health, simply because of the, how do I describe Nate? The arrangement of the.
What were you creating inspectional services?
No, thank you. It wasn't because of special act, yeah. Thank you.
So who's designated as the senior animal inspector right now? What's that?
The senior animal inspector is Jared.
That's Jared. That's Jared, okay. So for those playing along at home, this is seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents per fiscal quarter. So it's less than four thousand dollars a year.
Not a lot of money.
And also for clarification, this is part-time on-call.
Correct. So, Mr. Chair, when this came up, I had reviewed the job description and everything, asked Ari to work with John to make some changes before putting it on the agenda, but since it's been put on the agenda, I've talked to Ari, I've talked to John, I've talked to Nate. I, I have more questions now than I did even two weeks ago when I looked at it for, like, the first time, so isn't that position something that's from the state? Isn't that job description from the state on that position or something?
The, the description that we have here? No, I wrote this, this is just based off, you know, what I was told this person would do.
Okay. I don't, I don't know if Nate wants to offer anything, or if not, or I just could be the one that's confused.
Is there a particular point in it that you were looking for a change in, or?
Um, well, I, so, I know what John is saying, but I still keep asking the question, you know, like, why now, why is this, you know? The more I looked into it, I think there's mass general law that, like, says what the job position can be. So, I don't know, I'm just, would rather we look into this a little bit more before we go forward. The more I look into it, the more questions I have about it.
Happy to do that with a little bit of direction.
Yeah.
Looking in, in what, man, in what shape or form, how do you perform additional research?
So we have one inspector now, the senior inspector.
Right.
And they're on a part-time on-call basis, correct? As needed.
Yeah, but I think he's, I think he's part-time, and I think there's some added responsibilities that he has.
And, but, but currently-
This person would just be part-time.
But currently, they would be doing all of it. You kind of separated out some of the things that-
He's forming all functions at this point, yes.
Okay. And this has been going on for how long?
About eighteen, it's been going on for as long as I've been here, which is about eighteen months, so.
All right, so if we had, let's say, another meeting or so, so that select board member Fabian can have her questions answered, would be okay, because it's already been, it's not like it's something that we need to make a decision on today.
I think at a certain point, we do have to present a nomination to the state. We might be beyond that time already, but I think we've asked for an extension, but I can check with Ed, find out for sure.
Oh, okay.
And is that based on the fact that there's no one to back up who's doing it currently?
Uh, I think it's an annual thing that they're supposed to do, they're supposed to present to the state.
Because I feel we vote that, the select board votes that, and that one, you know?
I guess that's one of my questions, too, it's like, if this is something that's coming from the board of health, I don't know why the board of health, or the health agent, isn't here to represent it. Because isn't it a recommendation that they then send to, how many people are we supposed to have in that role? Are we supposed to have a full-time person, a part-time person, multiple part? Because isn't it an appointment that's made from us to go to the state? I just could be confused, but.
It wasn't presented to me in that way. They have to tell the state who's doing this, it's pretty much-
If the board would like to have Ed Cullen come before to discuss, I think we should do that.
Um, I'm, I'm just caught off-guard, because I initially would have thought that this would have gone under inspectional services, but, you know, Nate's kind of clarified why it didn't.
It sort of does, but, yeah, or budget-wise, it does, but, yeah.
Right, right, but it, was it Ed Cullen that asked us to do this? Was it the board of health?
If, to be fair to Ed, he did ask if he should be here tonight, and I said, you know, hey, it's just a job description, I'll be happy to present it for you, so. I don't want people to think like that he didn't deign to show up.
No, no.
See, you know, it's an on-call quarterly job that offers minimal pay, I didn't see this as a, you know, something that was going to require attention.
Okay.
Do you feel you could, the questions you have to John, to Ed, and get them
Yep.
Back by the twenty-fourth?
I can get him my questions tomorrow.
All right, then John will ask to get those resolved by the twenty-fourth, if that's okay?
Sure.
If all he has, if we, if the questions haven't been asked by the twenty-fourth and come back to us, we'll probably just put this on again.
It would be helpful if we could get some-
Yeah.
Yep, I'll give it, I'll give you what I have, I just want to be sure that I'm the one, first of all, that's, you know, if I am correct, then there's more work to be done. If I'm wrong, then, and I hate to approve it if I'm right, that we need to do more work on it, so.
Okay. So we will come back on the twenty-fourth and get those clarifications. But, yeah, let's, let's just make sure we get John the direction he needs immediately.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
All right, I got a lot of ink on here. Twenty-one, twenty-eight, and nine, and nine. And we got seventeen still, and new old. All right, so, go back to number eight. Review and vote to approve warrant articles for special town meeting, and vote to approve final warrant for special town meeting, May eighth, twenty twenty-three.
So special town meeting, you have three articles. Prior-year bills, unused capital projects balances for general fund, and unused capital project balance for parks. The largest prior-year bill is that debt assessment from Bristol County, Bristol Aggie, which, you know, we're all thrilled to be paying.
Yeah.
It's sarcasm. The rest are all, you know, current street forged late bills. In terms of the, in terms of article two, the transfers in general funds forty-five thousand dollars, mainly using balance in different, in, in different existing town meeting articles, just money left over for the most part. The, telling forty-five thousand dollars, and so we identified two high-priority items in fire to transfer to. Those would be in the CIP fund of one way or the other.
Okay.
And then article three is the, take the twenty, twenty-eight thousand dollars in the, it was a tennis courts project for parks, if you recall. We, the, the actual project came in significantly higher, in the forties. The board agreed to fund it with ARPO money. Couldn't co-mingle, though, so we just funded with ARPO money, which left this project sitting there. So the, the Parks Commission has a number of small repairs and repairs and, and and equipment items, lawnmowers, that kind of thing, that they would like to be able to fund with that money, so this would take care of that.
Bristol Aggie never budge on that, huh?
Oh, well, they threatened to deny entry to our children. Certainly did not.
So if it wasn't for that, it would be just the general small things that come across every year?
Yeah.
Any questions on those three articles for special town meeting? Yes, no? Uh, Amy would like to make a motion to approve, let me make sure I look at this. Uh, a few more articles, you know, in the file. Yeah, go for it, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the special town meeting warrant as presented with the three articles for May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Yep.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Leah?
Um.
Or is there any more discussion?
No, it, I'm just a little off, because we, we don't have to roll call vote, so I'm just not used to hearing my name.
Sorry, I just stopped doing it.
Yes, aye. Sorry, Brian.
All right. And day aye, thank you. We're all getting punchy this late in. All right, moving right on to number nine, review and votes to approve warrant articles for annual town meeting, and vote to approve final warrant for annual town meeting, May eighth, twenty twenty-three.
So the annual town meeting warrant consists of fifteen articles. The first six are budget-related, the officer-seller's budget, park enterprise fund, the landfill enterprise fund, capital budget stabilization fund, the OPEC trust. Article seven is the CPA reserves, which is the required minimum reserves. The number, article eight is the Old Colony feasibility study. I've been speaking with the superintendent of Old Colony, and he will be at the meeting, talking about how this is going to work financially and, and, and assessment-wise. The number nine is community septic management program, which is to restart up that, that program for, to, for community septic projects. Number ten is an increase in the tax, in the demand fee, target tax cut to from fifteen to twenty dollars, it's been a while since it's been raised. Article eleven is a proposal to increase the town moderators, from the town clerk's term to one year to three years. Twelve and thirteen are the bylaw recodifications. And by the way, to speak to that for a moment, we're going to, we have some, a couple of hard copies, we're going to have hard copies at the library in the town hall for people to see. We'll be pushing it on social media, we don't want anyone to think that it hasn't been shared. I'm also working on the, I'm not, I can't quite commit to this yet, but I'm hoping to do some type of video as well, describing the, the recodification as well, if we can put it on our media, social media. Articles fourteen and fifteen are citizens petitions, first one is a repeat of the call officials with a few tweaks in terms of the petition numbers. And article fifteen is a zoning bylaw revision that had, that is meant to apply to a, well, it, it applies to, I don't want to speak to who applies to specifically, but it, it, it has new language to, to allow a retail office or service business, around fifteen hundred square feet, with up to seven thousand square feet of associated storage for a special apartment.
Quick question on the recodification ones, you probably are going to do this, but can we provide residents with a couple of towns already using that system, so they can kind of see what they'd be getting at the end?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Yeah, Lilian is working on some of that stuff, too.
Oh, nice.
Everything to get it. I, I keep telling anyone that asks me about it, that it's, you know, recodification of the entire bylaws, so it's kind of hard to print out hundreds of copies.
Uh, it's about, I think the, the, I think the, the red, the red line and the, and the clean number, about this thick?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so number ten is a hundred and thirty, two hundred and sixty, there is like a hundred and thirty, like, actual-
Double-sided, yeah.
Double-sided, that would be.
Yep, so we're-
And one's a little less.
Yeah, we're, Ari definitely going to put it on the website here, there, a couple of hard copies.
But we are going to push, we're going to push out, you know, once, once the board approves the warrant, I was putting up.
So not something we're printing five hundred copies of?
No, no, but I am very sensitive and very conscious, I want, I really don't want there to be any impression out there that we haven't somehow been as open and transparent about sharing this document as much as possible.
Right, that makes total sense. Anybody have any questions on the articles that are in the warrant? We'll be doing warrant review on the twenty-fourth, correct?
Right.
So then we'll go in-depth through each one, what they are, make comments, et cetera.
I'll make a motion that we approve the warrant as presented for the annual town meeting scheduled for May eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, Lorraine?
Aye.
Lorraine?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
We need to have Ed place the articles on the warrant, we have to have the dual vote. Place the articles on the warrant, then approve the warrant.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion, I'll amend my motion to add the articles to the warrant. As presented.
Good, Tracy?
Yep.
All right. Lorraine?
Yes.
Leah?
Aye.
Day aye? Thank you, everybody. And seventeen, is that the only one left?
Do you want to do, this is, um, HEAs, do you want to do new business, whole business, if you have anything?
Sure, we can do that. Twenty-four, is there any new business that has properly come before the board?
Um, I do have something that, um, so, in looking at the calendar ahead, I do believe, and I mentioned this, I think, I don't know if it was our last meeting or the meeting before, I do think that everyone should take a look at Ari's contract and not delay too long. If we, I believe, if we want to keep him here, then we owe it to ourselves to look at his contract and not leave it, you know, town administrators are being, their contracts are being renewed almost a year ahead of time, just because folks don't want to lose them, so I would recommend to you, Mr. Chair, that you keep that in mind going forward on your agendas.
Yep, I agree, there's certainly a lengthy process there, and if Ari decided, or if we decided that we were no longer now this partnership, we want to definitely plan ahead on what that means and have a proper transition in place as well, so, yeah.
Is there a board member you'd like to, doesn't need, I should reach out to?
Um, let's put that on the agenda for next time.
Okay.
Just to make it official. Okay, any other new business?
Yeah, that was my thing, was just to bring it up so that
Yeah.
You're aware, that's all.
I'm going to make a note just to put that on the twenty-fourth.
Just to give full transparency, the twenty-fourth, we'll also have comments for the Rocky Woods development.
Okay.
The site visit is tomorrow, and if some people can make it, some can't. But that's a pretty significant twenty-eight.
Yep, okay, that was a very thick binder.
Yes.
All right, um, twenty-five, do you have any old business to revisit? Okay, twenty-six, correspondence. Ari, we've got one here, letter for Comcast regarding changes to Xfinity TV services.
I don't know, Tracy, you want?
It can be a weekly thing, um, you know, whether it's an increase in fees, or they're dropping this channel, they don't usually pick any channels up, but they drop a lot of them. So it is a weekly thing.
Looks like effective May twelfth, anybody who watches Shop HQ will no longer be happy with Xfinity. They'll be dropping that channel. There goes my Friday night. Okay. Okay, that looks like everything, we're down to revisit post-community agreements, fiscal year twenty-three charitable contribution proposals. It's in this file.
Okay, so this came up, uh, in January, I guess?
Uh, maybe February.
Maybe February?
Maybe.
A while ago.
The, um, uh, maybe you write them out in February. This is, was the second round of, of charitable contribution allocations. This is a finite resource right now, because none of the cannabis companies are providing the charitable contributions anymore. It's a matter of some dispute, but they're not, they're not providing it. And so it's, it's a, it's a, it's a limited resource. We have twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars available for allocations. The board last year approved fifteen thousand, five hundred and nineteen. There were a number of proposals this time around, there was, the board was unable to decide on the allocation last time, or to agree on a, on a mode for the allocation. And so we'll just bring this back to, for the two of you to consider what to do.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
In the name of full disclosure, um, so I, at the, at the meeting that this was brought up, I was not opposed to the banners, veterans' banners. I've been, you know, of course, accused, bad-mouthed, again. I'm not opposed to banners, it's just, I don't think using, what Ari said, as this finite source of money is the right thing to do, especially because this involves the historic commission, it could possibly involve the veterans. We haven't even heard from the veterans' agent on this, and I felt as though it was important to look at this as, have a group of people to discuss this also, in doing some other research. I mean, we may be able to get some grant money or use other monies for this, whereas some of these other things, you know, so anyways, so Mr. Selectman McCamara had made a motion to approve them all, I didn't second. I made a motion to approve it without the banners, he didn't second, so, again, you know, and that's a problem when we have one member who can't vote on things, it causes a conflict, but, again, we're not going to have that problem after next year, so I would like to make a motion to approve all these minus the banners. So I would like to make a motion to approve all these minus the banners.
Second that with discussion.
Okay.
So I obviously was not a part of making this list, but in reviewing it and going down, I kind of came away with a similar feeling, which is. Every one of these items enables us to provide a service or an event of some kind to our residents to enjoy. That one does not. I'm a hundred percent in favor of the idea. I think it's important to remember those that have given us what we have today. But if that's something that was better served out of your veterans budget and providing them the resources or some kind of drive, local charity drive.
Historic folks or.
I also had questions on where we're trying to get, if I remember correctly, we're trying to get that whole little area to be like a historic district. I don't want to put these in and then be told those aren't historically accurate and have to pull them out later. So I want to make sure that that's considered.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, I'd really like to hear from the Historic Society or the Commission on, you know, what their, what their feeling is. And, you know, frankly, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items, which total. And then that are taking up half the money and one item that's taking up, you know, almost a huge chunk of it. So, and again, I, you know, it's not anyone else's problem that I was chastised as usual for, you know, being anti veteran. I'm not.
No, we saw.
I will even chair a committee to make these banners happen, but I just think it can be done in a different way, that's all.
Yeah, I share that sentiment and we saw how fast the board turned around and threw another two thousand dollars of veterans for the grave markers. So I don't think there's any question on how much we support our veterans.
And there's, there was some question, too, about, you know, putting the banners in front of town hall to connect it to, like Dick and Dyer and Square. I mean, I like the view of the water. I can't imagine those banners aren't going to take a beating being by the water there. So it's almost like I really wish we had a lot more information on this. And like I said, if we want to put together, you know, a committee to work on it, I'll be happy to volunteer. But right now, I'd really like to be able to get the Arts Council, the Council on Aging, the Library and Betty's Neck some money to do their, their, you know, their programs for the residents, so.
Yeah, I think we could explore, you know, what other things are out there that could help our community where there are people suffering with costs going up as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I do know, I order all the flags for the town and I do know that we're replacing that flag out within a town hall. I would say every three to six months.
Three to six months?
And I'm buying the expensive polyester wind resistant flags.
Speaking of which, the one down at Dick's Run Square looked kind of ratty recently.
I just purchased a bunch of flags, so they should have a replacement.
Awesome.
And they're very expensive, by the way.
I believe it, I do believe it. I mean, I, I think it would be great to, you know, if we can come up with a, a little more thought out program here and maybe it ties in with Memorial Day or something. And work with the veterans, you know, officer and other towns that have done this and just figure out what's the best way to go about it.
Yep, yep. So I mean, you know, in the middle of Bridgewater, they have great, you know, flags right there. They have veterans faces on them and, you know, they do all kinds of great things for the veterans. I've actually talked to, we still have with us, Laurie Fahey, the director at the Council on Aging, just talked about, you know, different things like that that we can do. Even if, you know, it's different times of the year. So I'm all for doing all that. It's just by my quick math, all those other things are thirteen thousand, almost fourteen, and this one item is nine thousand. So, you know, it's for me, I would rather, because it also could be a finite revenue source for us, donation source. I would like to save that money if we have to for next year to get some of these other programs going again for the same folks next year, so.
Yeah, and, you know, to the point Tracy brought up there is that this is the one time to get it going. And then there's what is the recurring cost? So, you know, let's, I don't think the book is closed by any means on this idea. I think it's a great idea, it's just how do we execute from where it went?
Yep.
So, um, yeah, definitely, nobody here is anti veteran, is not even, not even close. So we've got a motion. Would you mind repeating the motion?
Yep, so my motion is to approve Arts Council, eighteen hundred dollars, Council on Aging, four ADA compliance picnic tables, twenty five hundred. Council on Aging Christmas Holiday Luncheon, eighteen hundred. Council on Aging St. Patrick's Holiday Luncheon for eighteen hundred dollars. Library, teen gaming at the library, one thousand dollars. Library Wonder Books and Vox Books, two thousand dollars. Library Golf in the Library, nine hundred twenty five dollars. And Betty's Neck for Betty's Neck Events, two thousand dollars for a total of.
I was just going to try to do the same.
Thirteen thousand nine hundred forty seven dollars. And to keep the remaining money unspent at this time. At this time.
How's that wording, Trace?
Did you get the Betty's Neck event at the end?
She did, she did.
I was listening to.
All right, and I believe I'd already seconded that, but I just asked to be repeated so that everybody remembered where we were. Um, so Leah, you vote?
I approve.
Uh, day aye. And I think that's it.
I do believe that's it.
All right, do you have anything you'd like to add? No, everyone wants to go home? Thank you for everybody that stayed with us.
Yes.
So I will entertain a motion to close the select board meeting.
So moved.
Seconded. Leah?
I approve.
Day aye, closed at eight thirty six or whatever it says in Tracy's clock.
Okay, eight thirty six.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.